Please leave this to the right, that will be United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the name of our Lord.
Thank you. Good morning. The first thing on our agenda today is the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I'm going to second it to approve the consent agenda listed. Any further discussion? No, no, is it fair?
Aye.
Okay, um. It's a public hearing. One minute. So a public hearing on bare tooth cabins S U P two thirty-one.
No, I didn't.
I said they're both at the same.
No. Yeah, I was gonna say. He, uh.
Yes.
I think first I was. Seventy.
There's a good article. So.
Bill Smith. Tony Bill Smith. One sixty-nine seventy-one. Okay, so seventy.
How's your dad?
Oh, good.
Glenda Brown called me the other night. I haven't talked to Glenda Brown in probably four or five years. She says, how is, uh, Mr. Livingston doing? And I said, you mean weed? No, my dad.
He wrote a, he wrote a, he was very, he was very, um, I'll be politically correct, upset about the naming of Jackson Pollock, of the review being named Jackson Pollock. And he wrote a, a letter to the editor about different names that he thought were more appropriate. I, I blamed, uh, Cheryl Overfield for the whole thing, told her to call her. He had some strong, he had some strong language about naming it.
Yep. Now, so when you see your dad, you need to say Glenda Brown.
I'm gonna let him know. I, I, uh, I'll be up there this afternoon. I thought about bringing, I thought about bringing down the, the discussion dossier.
Oh, no. He would, yeah, he's only known me for forty years.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Um, if I can, um, I'm going to abstain from discussion and vote, um, with the business dealing with the applicant. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So for this project, the applicants are Bill and Susan Omera. The property is located in the Clark Planning Area. The zoning district is GR twenty. We did receive an application from the Omeras on January twenty-fifth of this year, including payment, drawings and vicinity map. And talk also a discussion about type of activities that they were planning. The applicants also provided us with additional information that explained the justification for why the cabins are already been placed. We shared that with all of you. The applicants request approval of this S U P that would allow a highway commercial business. It will entail an A cabin complex. There'll be one historic log cabin and there'll be two bathhouses, which are century cabins, same size as the, the other A cabins. And there'll be a common area between all these for grilling and dining. So we have classified this planning and zoning, we, as highway commercial business. That is a business that provides a substantial portion of the goods and services to tourists and travelers. This property is a, just located on a portion of a hundred and forty acre piece. The location is about a half mile northwest State Highway one twenty. It's just on the south side of County Road one A B. You can see the location in figure one. This property does have an address of one oh six County one A B. As I mentioned, this is in GR twenties. It is an A GR twenty zoning district and this use is allowed there provided the S U P is approved. In terms of neighboring land uses, you can see in figures two, um, this hundred and forty acres is right in the middle of that map. There's agriculture uses around it. There's residential uses around it. And then there's deal and land just to the northeast. And this, in addition to what this property, uh, what this uses, this, the applicants also use this property for agriculture. You can see to the south of this. So there were site plan drawings that were provided by the applicants. Those are shown in figures three and four. Figure three is basically a site plan drawing. And to the right is, it shows where the use will be located relative or within that a hundred and forty acre piece. Madam Chair, figure four, it's a close-up of the site plan. And we shared with you a revised site plan that the applicant shared with us. And that new plan, what it shows, instead of just ten parking spaces, it shows sixty parking spaces. And there's also a comment in that new plan saying that there is exterior lights, I believe, on each cabin. And ground solar lights, uh, lighting up walkways, I believe, in front of or close to each cabin. So lighting has been addressed and additional parking has been addressed by the applicants. In terms of site characteristics, it's a relatively flat portion of property. I mentioned this is just south of County Road one A B. That's how it will be accessed. The use does currently have a barn and a residence, and the applicants do live on this property. And as I mentioned before, the main use of this park property is for agricultural purposes. Legal notices, there were a, or we did place a legal notice in the Powell Tribune on March twenty-ninth and April twelve. A letter to neighborhood property owners was mailed on March twenty-fifth. We shared the staff report with all of you with the applicant prior to today. Bare Tooth Electric said that, in terms of the agency, um, notices, Bare Tooth Electric said that they could provide electricity and it has been provided. Clark Fork Irrigation District said this use will not impact any irrigation facilities. Park County Treasurer said property taxes are currently paid. One, the Department of Ag said they have no concerns with this use. Game and Fish said they had no wild wine comments. Clark Fork Conservation District, they did provide a soils report, um, although the, the cabin already placed. And of course, there will be no digging, no basements, no foundation. Mary did an initial weed inspection. She said a weed plant will not be required. However, she recommends the applicant follow best management practices. Public Works, they responded, um, initially with saying that legal access does exist in County Road one A B. They responded just yesterday, um, saying that they did receive a drainage plan from the Omeras and that has been approved. And the Omeras have submitted an application for an additional address. And that was a concern that P and Z have. So the drainage plan has been met and the Omeras are getting, uh, a new address for this use. We did receive one public comment that was, that supported the use. Planning and zoning heard this application on March sixteenth. They had some conditions, Madam Chair. Number two condition, um, dealt with public works and a drainage plan. So that condition has been met. Number three, of P and Z's condition, a plan for outdoor lighting, that condition has been met. Number four, their conditions, an updated plan for parking and traffic movements, that condition has been met. Otherwise, um. Number five, the applicant shall enlarge or replace the existing septic system to serve the historic cabin and residence. So I'm, I'm working with the Omeras, um, to basically increase the size of that. And we do have a septic system application to serve the bathhouses. So that, it's not been approved yet, but we do have that application, Madam Chair. Terms of compatibility and impacts, the mayor said this will be for seasonal vacation rental business. They, the mayor said that there'll be a distance between the shoes and other neighbors. Each cab, or seven cabins will contain one queen or one queen bed. One cabin will be fitted with bunk beds for families with children. Each cabin will have amenities, mini refrigerator and air conditioning. None of the cabins, well, the cabins that people are staying in will not have a bathroom, nor will they be supplied with water. As I mentioned before, there'll be two bathhouses. This, this compound is enclosed with a privacy fence. There is the one historic cabin that will have two bedrooms and one bathroom. Exterior lighting, I've already talked about. The, uh, the applicants will have a noise avoidance. The season will be made fifteen till November first each year. Fire pits will be available should conditions allow. All guest activities will occur on property. So, so the applicants are not planning any, uh, activities or any educational programs. As I mentioned, the mayor is a limited property. Parking has been increased to ten spots. Solid waste will be disposed of in commercial dumpsters. Electricity will be provided, um, and a list of rules and regulations will be provided for each guest. Building setback requirements have been met. No covenants are proposed or existing. I mentioned outdoor lighting. This property has no known, no non-conformities. No nuisances have been reported. I mentioned the soils report. I mentioned access, Madam Chair. In terms of domestic water, there is a water that was established, there is a well that was established in twenty twelve on the property. Produces five gallons per minute, has a reservoir storage of six hundred gallons. That water will supply water to the cabin and to outdoor water hydrants. There was an announced done on it. No coal ore or E coal I was found. Nitrogen was detected at one point eight six, uh, perch per million, which is below that contaminant level ten. Lead, manganese, lead, lead, manganese, zinc, and iron were not detected. Arsenic was detected at a very low level. TBS was detected three seventy-one, which is low, it's below that contaminant level five hundred. Irrigation district, um, I mentioned that. We already talked about parking. Already mentioned a little bit about sewage. Again, we do have a permit for the, um, um, the rental cabin, um, I'm sorry, for the bathhouses. And the, the septic serving the existing house and that historic cabin will have to be increased in size somewhat. Electricity is provided by Bare Tooth. One new sign is proposed that will conform to our county regulations. I mentioned solid waste. This use is not located in any overlay district. Site plan review is required for highway commercial business use. However, given the size of this project, site plan, uh, this project is exempt from that provision. Madam Chair, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I just got one quick question on clarification on a P and Z commission approval condition number seven. This is Aspen, this is from the building department, application three thirty-eight, Ronald. And they've already been built. So am I, is this just an effort to bring them into compliance or?
Yes, yes, the commissioner, Madam Chair, yes, that is an effort to bring them into compliance. And I should have mentioned that we have received applications for all those structures.
This is a public hearing. Is there any public comments there?
What is the completion date? Are they looking at when they can start doing business?
I, I assume should be approved today. They're, they're almost ready to start. My own, my understanding is the only thing that we would require is that one septic system be enlarged somewhat.
Does it count and then they may not?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. But then, of course, they still, they have a permit for the, the bathhouse and septic. Um, that has not been approved yet, but we're ready to approve that. Um, and then, of course, when that system gets completed, they should really go.
Anything from the others? Any other information or?
Bill Omera, applicant. I would just like to compliment the planning and zoning, all the people we worked with. Extremely helpful, extremely personable, friendly. Nothing that I would consider to be unreasonable. So I really think they need to be applauded. First time I've been through this process and it was pleasant, so.
Good job.
I'm sure I make one of those public hearings.
I'm going to second it plus a public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. I'm going to approve. Second.
Seconded to approve.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Kim?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-two thirty-four.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen.
Thirty-four. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe in this.
What are you, you don't?
If he had already thought about that, yeah, that would have. And it wasn't nice, so it's. Yeah, so there's no need to. He's a general contractor as well.
And I do a lot of work for him.
This is page four in the next passage.
Oh, great.
I, I think your copy was.
Yep.
It's.
Got a star in there.
Yeah, we have contact, we have. Replace it.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like that you can. If you get him on a very.
Yeah, you.
But, uh, you really don't need to.
Well, that's why I talked.
Don't worry, Phil, Brian's a.
Okay, um. Next thing on our agenda is a public hearing for copper mountain shed sales, a special use permit number two thirty-two.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this applicant is from Gerald Lowen. And the property is in the Powell Planning Area, the zoning district is GRP. This is a, uh, special use permit, um, application. And we did receive that application on February first of this year that showed plans and drawings and also had a discussion of the activities that might affect adjacent properties. Also, vicinity map was attached. The applicant provided supplemental application material in addition to the application and a statement from Dale Wharton, who is the owner of Copper Mountain Irrigation. So Copper Mountain Irrigation is the business on this property. Um, but Mr. Lowen is actually the property owner. He's the applicant today. So we do have in front of you a special use permit application. This will be a business to display and sell small storage barns, cabins, greenhouses, sheds to the public. This property will be on a seven point seven acre parcel of land. However, the actual use of this will be much smaller than that. This does have an address of nine 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 County Road eleven. As I mentioned, this property is also the location of Copper Mountain Irrigation export business. And the applicant for this use will use offices and bathrooms in that building that is Copper Mountain Irrigation. And as you probably remember, um, on September fifteenth, or you may not, but twenty twenty, um, Board of County Commissioners approved the special use permit with site plan review for Copper Mountain Irrigation. The use today is a minor commercial business, which is defined as retail and service businesses and office uses. Building size is less than five thousand square feet and less than an acre, uh, in association with the use. And so for this use, certainly, the square footage in the existing building will be less than five thousand square feet because it's just to be an office or two and, and the restrooms. And the outside floor area, or the outside area where these cabins will be displayed is less than an acre in size. So we believe it's, it's, uh, conforms to the minor commercial business use. Location is shown in figure one. Approximately point nine miles southwest of Powell. And it is on road, or just off of Road eleven and just north of Highway fourteen A. As I mentioned, it is in the GRP zoning district. This use is allowed there provided a special use permit is approved. In terms of site characteristics, this property is relatively flat. And I will, and you can see that figure two, we have a topo map. Copper Mountain Irrigation employs three full-time employees. And two other employees work in the field. And at least some of these employees will also be associated with this use. In terms of neighboring land use, that is shown in figure three. Again, that is page four and that's that, that map I just, I just gave you. And I apologize for, for not seeing that before. So a lot of the land surrounding this use is in agricultural uses. There are some residential uses in the area. As I mentioned, fourteen A is just on the south side. Road, County Road eleven is on the west and Lane ten, um, moves to the west from, essentially from this property. Terms of, um, oh, I should mention, Madam Chair, figure four, it, it's a diagram. And figure five is a diagram provided by the applicant, which I think were very handy, showing where the existing building is located and where his use will be located. And that use, he and I both estimate it'll just be a little over, uh, forty thousand square feet. But it's under an acre in size where the cabins will be stored and displayed. This property is within one mile of the city of Powell. They were notified. I'll mention their comments in just a minute. Legal notices were met. Those were in the Powell Tribune on March twenty-ninth and April twelve. Letter to area property owners was sent out on March twenty-fifth. We shared the staff report with the applicant with all of you parts today. In terms of agencies, the treasurer stated that property taxes are fully paid. Park County Fire District one stated they have the ability to provide fire protection at this location. While McGee and Fish, they have no wild wine comments regarding this permit. City of Powell responded, they have no concerns with this proposal. We can pass said a long-term anxious weed management plan will not be required. However, she does recommend the applicant follow best management practices. We did receive several responses back from Public Works. I believe all those were shared with you. And find, um, the last response from Public Works stated that they have approved a right-of-way permit for the newest driveway. So there was an existing driveway in the south. There was a new driveway to the north put in a couple months ago. Now Public Works has a approved permit for that. And the Shoshone Irrigation District originally provided comments. Well, I take that back, Madam Chair. In the planning and zoning meeting, Shoshone Irrigation representatives were there. They had some comments. They would like to see a revised site plan. They have since seen one and we had an email or letter back from them saying that, um, they really, they have no concerns. The applicant has addressed their concerns. We've not received any public comments. Planning and zoning looked at this application on March sixteenth of this year. They had some recommended conditions. Number three was dealing with that new, uh, gravel driveway. That condition has been met. Number four, their conditions was a response from Public Works. That condition has been met. Their fifth condition was comments back from Shoshone Irrigation. That condition has been met. So the applicant would like to display and sell the small sheds and greenhouses and barns. And at this time, our understanding is the applicant will sell the structures that have been constructed by Mr. Ruben Miller. Mr. Ruben Miller also has received an approved S U P earlier this year from the county commissioners. The applicant has contracted with a driver to transport sheds from the builder and to deliver the sheds to customers. The applicant stated that truck traffic will flow from the county road along the drive on the south side of the current Copper Mountain Irrigation building. The applicant said this use will not interfere with any irrigation facilities. Workers for this use will consist of the Copper Mountain Irrigation employees. Days and hours of operation, days will be Monday through Friday, hours will be eight AM to five P. The applicant anticipates that customer traffic will average two customers a day and anticipate selling a one structure per week. Domestic water to the building is from Northwest Shore Water. And Copper Mountain Irrigation does have an in-ground septic system that's appropriately sized for ten employees. This use will not be within twenty feet of the county road right-of-way. No covenants are proposed or existing. No new outdoor lighting is proposed. However, there is outdoor lighting on the Copper Mountain Irrigation structure. Those are all shielded and down-directed. This property has no known non-conformities. No nuisances have been reported. Soils report will not be required for this use. Access basically, um, or access will be directly from County Road eleven. I did mention the new right-of-way permit, mentioned domestic water. The Irrigation District, Madam Chair, um, we do have in our, as you know, parking regulation for non-residential residential uses. This would likely be a non-residential use. However, our conclusion is basically that, um, space for parking is adequate, space for unloading, completed structures and for loading, salt structures appear to be adequate. And all parking and driveway will all be gravel. Really, the only parking necessary is for the employees and the occasional customer traffic. I mentioned septic, electricity is provided by Rocky Mountain Power to the existing, uh, building. Natural gas is provided by M D U. One new sign will be used to advertise this use. And of course, we do have standards and that sign will conform to those standards. Solid waste will be disposed of according to county regulations. No specific criteria applies to this use. This use isn't an ag overlay district. We anticipate, um, that this use will not impact surrounding ag uses based on, um, what's planned. And that the structures will be displayed or removed. It is on land that was removed from ag production many years ago. We can pass has addressed concerns. No pets or domestic pets. No pests for domestic pets are expected to be related to this use. And this use also, um, we, we know that the applicant is aware of the agriculture practice occurring on the neighboring property. And our, our belief is this use, given that there'll be limited customers appearing, probably won't be affected much by ag operations or ag activities. Terms of site plan review. Um. Madam Chair, I should mention, or did mention, this is minor commercial business use. It's not a cottage industry. However, um, this use is, uh, does require to go through site plan review. However, the specifics of this use means it's exempt from site plan review because new construction will not exceed five thousand square feet. And the land being used is going to be less than one acre in size. Madam Chair, we have some findings. We have three recommended conditions. We are happy to answer any questions you might have. And I apologize, Madam Chair, on page twelve. We have site plan reviews required for cottage industry that should be minor commercial business use.
Questions from the listeners at this time? This is a public hearing. Are there any concerns or questions from the public? Are there any concerns or questions from the public?
I'm going to move to the vote here.
Second. Moved and seconded and closed the public hearing. Further discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
What's the question for?
Move through, Madam Chair. Second.
The moved and seconded to approve the USF presented. Any further discussion? Are you done? All those in favor?
Aye. Number eight, Commissioner. Number 35.
Thank you. Commissioner.
I pay attention to the class, boy. I used to not.
Let's go to the next one.
Grace Land. Don't regret my ass.
Thank you. Thank you, O B.
Yeah, boy. Thank you. Hang on a minute. Right. Back for more. I'm glad enough.
I have a place for it.
Oh. Hopefully, whatever I'm saying is kind of what makes sense. It's not about you.
No, you're covered. It's just to be covered.
You're good stuff. Whatever I get to do during the year. What do you say?
I made a copy of your speech.
Would be. Thank you.
That's great.
One all. That's okay. Thank you. I might try to clash. I'm afraid to start best with that machine. Complicated. I can hear why. Yeah. Push a button. You might not like the coffee I made, but it comes out of there.
I think we're close enough, Kim. So this next one would be a public hearing on Grace Land, subdivision number 64, sketch plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant for this is Grace Incorporated. This property is in GRP zoning district, the planning areas Powell. We did receive a minor subdivision application on February 3rd of this year with payment description of the use, sketch plan, and a copy of the notice of intent to subdivide, other supporting documents as well. We did receive then a revised sketch plan on February 9th. And you see those in figures one and two. The applicant requests approval on the five lot, which will be a minor subdivision. One lot will be 3.93 acres, one lot will be 3.02 acres, one lot will be 6.95 acres, one lot will be 7.33 acres, and one lot will be 7.13 acres, all for residential use. As I mentioned, we did classify this as a minor subdivision. You can see the location of the property in figure three. It's two miles, approximately two miles south of Powell and a little bit west, but essentially south of Powell, about a half mile west of Highway 295. It's just on the south side of County Lane 11 and a half. In terms of site characteristics in figure three, we have a topo map. Property is essentially level. And right now, it's vacant and it's irrigated properly. In terms of neighborhood use, in figure four, we show that, as I mentioned, the property now is this parcel is now in agriculture use. There is some agricultural land surrounding it to the south, to the west, and to the northwest. Otherwise, there's residential uses around this and there are several subdivisions. I believe that that property to the, just to the east is a subdivision and directly to the north is a subdivision. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so that review is not required. Notice of intent to subdivide was in the Powell Tribune on January 27th and February 1st of this year, consistent with the regulations. Madam Chair, you mentioned this is a public hearing or because the sketch plan review was minor. The notice of that, the legal notice was in the Powell Tribune on March 29th and April 12th of this year. On March 25th, a certified letter to neighbors went out. And we did share the staff report with the applicant, the applicant's representative, and the board of county commissioners prior to today. In terms of agency referrals, we have a list of agencies we have to notify and then we notify other agencies we think might have an interest. Fire District responded. They said they can provide fire protection to this location. Quartz 4 Conservation District, as they're as they're required to do, they did share with us a soils report. And we have a paragraph in the applicant or the in the staff report summarizing that. Postal Service responded. They said they can't provide mail with new residents already. T C T responded, they have wireless service in the area. They said they might be able to provide internet and phone to this location. Garland Light and Power, they responded. Madam Chair, as you know, we shared their response with you. They have, they said they have the ability to provide service to this area. They provide some detail information how that electricity will be provided to each lot and the fact they'll need easements. Park County School District 1, they responded with a letter. It is in their boundary. They will provide school bus services should that be necessary. Mary McKinney did an initial inspection, discovered the presence of noxious weeds. As a result, she is requiring a weed management plan. We do have a copy of that. That plan has been approved. M D U has responded with several email, one letter and one email. They talked about the ability to provide service to this area. They talked about any easements they would, they would need and how their main line, which I believe is on the north side of 11 and a half, how that can be brought 11 and a half and installed before structures are in place. Shoshone Irrigation District, they responded with emails. That first, they said they're working with the applicants. And finally, well, their their last response, April 7th, they did say they received a water distribution plan and that has been proposed. In the fish responded, they don't have any concerns with this particular subdivision. They're concerned with the number of proposed subdivisions in the county. The Park County Treasurer said taxes are paid current. Public Works responded, I know Brian is here today, originally with a letter in February talking about, first of all, applicant clarifying whether or not lots one and two would have legal use on the west side of the property. At the time, they proposed, Public Works proposed a 20-foot wide access to the utility piece on the west side of block one. They wanted that to be increased to 40 feet. We did receive an email from Public Works on, that was dated April 10th, that in that they said that there will, there needs to be a 30-foot easement on a current driveway, which is just to the west of this proposed subdivision. That should be sufficient to serve the proposed lots. Public Works said that that will have to be named. Also, Public Works recommend that all landowners utilize, utilizing the shared driveway, enter into a road improvement and maintenance agreement. And then we did share the comments from Public Works. Again, I know Brian is here today. And in his letter, he talked about the potential for a new subdivision on the west side of this. And so there was some language about people sharing that access and about it being made to be a, an easement made to be 60 feet. Madam Chair, no public comments have been received. There was a pre-application meeting that occurred on December 9th of last year. Fees for this might have been paid. Notice of intent was, I did mention when that was published in the Powell Tribune. We do have a title report. No new roads are proposed for the subdivision. However, there will be an access just west of the subdivision that will serve at least one of these lots and possibly, which is lot two and possibly lot one. Garden disposal is available in the county. I mentioned Garland Light and Power will be providing electricity. M D U will be providing gas. I mentioned T C T. We had no information about any hazards on this property. There was a sketch plan that was provided. Madam Chair, also, no legal, a legal easement does not exist yet, but the applicants are aware of that and they're working to have a legal easement, legal access provided for, certainly for lot two, which is that southern lot, possibly for lot one. Otherwise, the the lots on the north have access from the county road. In terms of, Madam Chair, in terms of wastewater, there was, there was a subsurface evaluation done on proposed lots two, three, and five in February this year. Perforated all were between eight, 13, which are very reasonable. Estimation cuts were also made on those same proposed lots. To eight feet, no groundwater was found. Based on that, conventional septic systems will likely be sufficient should this be approved and development occur. In terms of domestic water, there was an initial water test that was done on a well at 996 Lane 11 and a half in January this year, which is just to the west of this property. That water sample didn't meet the Safe Drinking Water Act because no E. coli or coliform was detected. Originally, the water sample was not detected for all the elements that we need. That has essentially, that has since been resolved. We did get a new water test. Again, I'll mention there was no coliform. T D S in this new test was at 158, which is below the cutoff of 500. And nitrogen was detected at 0.03, which is below the cutoff of 10. Arsenic was not found. Copper, iron, lead was not found. And sodium at 25 milligrams, which is is fairly low, Madam Chair. So those are water test results and they seem to be sufficient. They seem to be adequate. In terms of ag impacts, this, as I mentioned, this property is then developed irrigated crop land. Of course, the applicant will be required to comply with the requirements of Weeden Pest. We don't believe that any proposed changes will significantly impact ag operations other than this land, of course, become, will come out of ag use. For and always, this this development will not cause further disturbances of weed development, pests, or litter or domestic pests. And irrigation facilities and ditches are shown on the sketch plan. This property is not, however, an ag overlay district. In regard to a water distribution plan, it is within the Shoshone Irrigation District. And if, I I don't remember if I mentioned this before, but a water distribution plan has been submitted to the district and that has been approved. And no state reviews required because it is a minor. A Madam Chair, along the bottom of page 16 of our staff report, a subdivision improvements agreement will be required because utilities will have to be made, essentially electricity and gas will have to be made adjacent to each of these lots. And so, and I also want to mention that in addition to a subdivision improvements agreement, that I, my understanding is that the applicants are working on a a homeowners association agreement, among other things, to address access. And I mentioned before that, to our knowledge, that legal access, at least to proposed lot two, has not been approved yet. So something to look forward to. And we have some conditions on page 17, condition not met, again, talking about legal access, at least the lot 22. Updated response from Public Works, that has been met. A re-invert recommendation from the Shoshone Irrigation District, that condition has been met. And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, these are conditions from P and Z. And P and Z looked at the sketch plan and recommended approval on March 16th. Another condition they had was long-term noxious weed management. Madam Chair, we have some findings. We have, I believe, some recommended conditions. Yes, you had a chance to look at those. I will say one more thing, Madam Chair. Our recommended conditions, number six and number seven, I believe they say the same thing. So if if you approve the sketch plan today, I believe one of those conditions can be taken now. I believe there there's a duplication. Or have any questions that you might have? True. I'm doing. Do the actions.
Any questions for our question? And then this is a public hearing, so are there any comments from the public on the subdivision?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian Edwards, Park County, here. I thought I'd just clarify a little bit on my letter dated February 28th, which was prior to the P and Z meeting. My comment number three there, I had a little bit misunderstanding of what the access was going to be for so lot two. And I misunderstood that thinking it was a access easement 20 foot on the property. I got clarified at the meeting. And so I just kind of wanted to point that out. That was incorrect. So anyway, since that sounds like a little tight, let's have at least one conversation. I think our office's position is, these are tricky because you're looking at what's this particular development now and where we're at now. But we know of at least another development to the west that's in progress and coming very shortly. And so so progress is happening. I think that road that's out there now, that's the access that serves Copanavers, this lot is adequate. It's a 30-foot easement, 20-foot wide gravel road that's in pretty good shape, gravel driveway. For this development, that road's adequate. It needs to be named and we need to address off of that road because with this development, it will add to that. Our concern, as Kim mentioned, not concern, but now's the time while we've got the, you know, Copanavers, Gilas, Whitelocks, all here and all kind of moving forward, getting them all to participate. I know there already is an agreement and working on something else. As long as they all participate in that shared maintenance improvement agreement, I think now's the time to get that taken care of. But as far as like improvements to support this specific subdivision, I think we're okay with waiting for that to come down the road as long as everybody's at the table when that time comes. But that's really all I have to have. There there are some few complicated things. There's a drainage ditch, concrete that's between this development and that existing road. Some things that that might end up, if you add another 30 feet, not of this development or of future development, that road's going to end up being kind of skewed in that easement that right-of-way. But, you know, there, we we think long-term it'll end up being 60 feet of easement to allow for utilities, development, and everything else. And long-term, that road needs to be lined to a 24-foot wide road for 20 foot. But I think for this development, it's fine, but leave it at that.
Other other comments, concerns?
I'm composed, public hearing, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Moved and seconded and closed the public hearing. This is the second of the public hearing. Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
What's your board?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second to approve, as presented. Assuming that the conditions listed. Further discussion?
Sure, I just want to comment as much as I just like removing private culture lands for subdivision. If you look at figure three, there's so much subdivision to the north and to the east. And it is within that, it's surrounded on two sides. Development's coming whether we like it or not. And I don't, I guess I'm going to support it. Don't want to sound hypocritical in things in the past, but this particular subdivision of where it's at location close to Powell somewhat, and thrown by other subdivisions, I support it.
Madam Chair, are you thinking six, condition six and seven? They're mostly duplicative, although I did see in one six, I know talks about the county attorney being involved in the S I A. That's not in seven, but but if you're happy, maybe, yeah, maybe six should come off. It's mostly a duplication of what's in seven.
Madam Chair, your recommendation is to approve the removal of condition six. It's all in my motion to state that. One second.
Okay with that? Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve the removal of condition number six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Twenty-six.
Okay, we're on a little bit of a break. We have our seven minutes.
Thank you. See you tomorrow. See you tomorrow.
We've got about five minutes before the next. The next thing on our agenda, Executive Director Youth Clubs of Park County. This is one of our multiple special funding requests for this year, for this coming year's budget.
Now, we feel sorry for you guys, we really do. And this is Tiffany Wexley, I think you guys know her. She will eventually take over from me one day soon, hopefully. We just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some hardships that we might be facing, especially with this summer. Last summer, if you guys remember, you gave us seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we ended up and let the families come for free in June. We had way more kids than we had anticipated for the month of June. We ended up with two hundred and seventy-four kids just in June. So the money that you had given paid for two hundred and thirty-six of them, so we paid the cost of thirty-eight of those kids. So I guess we kind of learned that if we were free, we might would have more kids that would come. We don't know that, but we kind of assume because that's the first time we've ever done that. But this summer, also, we are going to have a little bit of hardship to give food to the kiddos. After we already done our budget, we learned from the Cody School District, who we've always partnered with for those free lunches and snacks. Well, apparently, the new map, we're not in the new map that she can cover. So our free lunches that we've had for the last three years, I think it is, the right three, we're not going to have this summer.
Lunches and breakfast.
And breakfast and food snack. So we're going to be really short trying to feed these kids. Granted, most of the parents tried to send something with them, but we really did have some of those families that attended on those meals. Which we have. And what we would do with the food that was left at the end of the week, we put out and families will take it home with food over the weekend. So that's going to be a little bit of a struggle for us this year. The other struggle we're going to be looking at, as you guys know, fuel costs has gone out of this world. So we may have to cut back on some of the traveling, the field trips because the amount that we're going to have to tack under those trips, we don't know for sure that parents could pay that. So it'd be nice if we had a little extra pool of money that we could stick somewhere for that. And then finally, I think everyone in this room can relate, we can't get staff. We can't even hire a bike staff because we need anybody to apply. So, and to keep the staff we've got, we might be looking at having to give a pay raise just to keep them. I mean, we don't want to lose what we've got for sure. So those are some of the challenges that we're kind of facing this year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and typically have to answer any questions that you guys might have for us.
Can you explain a little bit about the school district change, map change? Is that a state situation, or is that, how is that handled?
I not really know. The she's.
Why didn't you really explain it? She just said that there is an area that she, and I, I don't know if we were covered because she sent food over to Powell even. And I think that might have been a coded thing, like that she had.
Yeah, and she had both.
But she said that there's an area that they only cover now. So like even Men Talk Park is not in her area anymore. So she, they were doing like free lunches there, so you know, dropping off. You think that she can't do it there anymore.
So, but we don't really know how that area got changed.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts?
Madam Chair, just want to point out the youth clubs. We're always hearing about the shortages of people who need to work. They're in the same situation. But what the youth club does provide is a place for these workers to somewhat low income to bring their kids. So that's not only part of part of helping out families, but it's part of kind of full power of, so the services that they offer is invaluable for people to bring their children to someplace that they can trust and learn.
And we've had a lot more support from families too, especially since COVID. I think they, they really realized that, oh, wow, we need them. So we've had a lot more support. They're real good to help us if we need some supplies or different things like that. They're willing to bring it. But on what years I'm not sure. One of the larger daycares closed in Cody, and we've already had all of those parents come and sign their kids up here in Cody for that summer program. There'll be five-year-olds coming into the program, so. Right in?
That's it.
All righty, thank you guys. We appreciate all you do for us. I know it's a tough choice.
Thank you.
Brought my board chair, Kim Davis. I brought my budget again. I know you love it.
Oh, boy.
Great sheet, yeah. This is our proposed budget for 2023, and we'll just start July first. It's four thousand less than last year, or the year that we're currently in. But that's because I think I'll need less money in our miscellaneous grants and carryover. So I try really hard not to have to spend our carryover. So I think I've explained to this board before that all of our funding that we get, state quarter money, is all a hundred percent reversible. So we have to spend first and then show the receipts of every purchase and then wait to get reversed, and it can take twenty-three months. So we need money in the bank to keep things rolling. So anyways, I think we're doing really well. I did increase the request by one thousand dollars. And I did not put it in the budget yet because I don't know yet. This is a draft budget. But I do know I'm going to get a little bit more from the city of Cody and most likely from the city of Powell as well. Which is helpful because as Tina said, travel expenses and gas has gone way up. Our shelter has been full since last June. We are having a really hard time getting people into their own housing situations once they come into our shelter. We have a nine-bed shelter over in Powell, and like I said, it's been full since last June. And we went from a hundred and fifty-nine bed days in 2021, when so far this fiscal year, we're at one thousand three hundred and fifteen bed days. So we've got, because if a family of five stays one day, that's.
From a hundred and fifty-nine to over a thousand?
Yeah, one thousand three hundred and fifteen bed days. So if you have one family of five staying just one day, that's five bed days.
In the way it's counted.
But, yeah, it's a lot more. We have been just really, really busy. You know, generally, our statistics as far as number of clients coming through the doors has stayed relatively the same, about fifty clients a month between Cody and Powell. And supervised visits have increased quite dramatically this year as well. And then, let's say, shelter, it's just been, because we just have no place to move to. We're having really a hard time with that. So we're supporting all these people with food and utilities and, you know, everything at the shelter while they're staying with us. So anyways, the money that you provide us with the town of money as well as the general funds we use as cash match for grants, which is very helpful because, again, all of that, the federal requirements and state money, you know, they have all these requirements. So it's very, very helpful, and we're very appreciative of all of that. And then we do have, it's not reflected in, I sent you the latest financial report because you requested that. And so it was February was the last one I had when I mailed it to you. But I didn't include as our investment accounts. And those are at two hundred and nine thousand. Value right now is two hundred and ninety thousand, fifty-six dollars. And so, but a hundred and five of that is still earmarked for our capital campaign, it's something like that.
You asked a little bit about that because I've heard some things.
Heard some rumors?
Yeah. I know you want to recall.
Yes.
And review what we're having here. I guess just a conversation of what we see through some of the legislative stuff and some of the documents from the state of Wyoming. Are you watching that to find out what might be available through some of the health and wellness monies at the state level?
Yes, yes. And the new Wyoming Community Development Authority has the community block grant funds now, and they're no longer with the Wyoming Business Council. So I've been in contact with them, and they say that they're getting their ducks in the hole as far as releasing those grants again in two to three months. So I'm on their list to receive a grant application. And what I intend to do is hopefully be able to apply for that grant. And so I'm assuming it will still require a government entity to sponsor. So I would again be approaching this board to help sponsor that for us as you did in the past. And what we would use that funding for is to renovate our current facility so that one half is ADA compliant offices and client space. And then the other half of the duplex would be ADA compliant space for support groups and supervised visitation custody exchange. Then, once that's underway, we will kick off, restart our capital campaign for two efficiency shelter apartments in our backyard. And, uh, you know, we hire, uh, Plan One architects have done all the architectural drawings and they're putting together the package for us. So that, once we start this capital campaign, we can go through the community, talk to groups and, and ask for donations and show them the plans and all of that. So we're, we're just down that road now and, um, hopefully it'll all work out. But it would be really helpful, one thing COVID taught us is that our shelter went dark because people didn't want to stay in communal living with COVID and Wyoming. Um, but now people are staying with, uh, batters because it's either stay with the batter or they become homeless. And so we need more shelter space, especially in Cody, because Cody's a bigger populated area. Um, Powell is, we have nine beds and three bedrooms, but it's still communal living. And this way, with two efficiency separated apartments around a door that connects so that if we do have one big family, they could take over the whole thing. But we can keep two separate people or families in two separate apartments with just a shared laundry room. Um, and that way, we can avoid mixing populations. If we have someone who is, uh, a known substance abuser or has mental health issues, they can stay in their own apartment away from the family with two and three and four-year-olds, you know, uh, in the same living space. So that's, that's our goal. And it, the, the plans, once I, uh, be unveiling them, you'll see that there'll be two, uh, parking spaces designated from the, that's in the alley uh, between our building and that apartment building next door to us. And then a little tiny play yard, uh, but it'll, we'll just go off the back to, to put in these two efficiency apartments, so.
You have the parking in the front for the normal?
Parking in front as usual, yeah. So, um, uh, we've had the, uh, Plan One and sort of everybody's, uh, counting city or, you know, zoning, all of that to make sure we're good with everything. But we own the facility outright. Um, so we're planning on using the land and, uh, also, you know, if we, if we have our hundred and five thousand dollars of cash match for this community development block grant. Um, uh, so we hopefully will be in good position to get it. And this time, the property can't be sold out for progress, as it was the last, you know, two, first two times. And then the third time we applied, um, they changed the rules and said, no bricks and mortar. They wouldn't build, you know, and we couldn't do, um, a shelter. So that's why, so now we can rehab our current facility with our funding. But they won't build the shelter for us, but that'll have to be the capital campaign portion of that project, so. Yeah, I was wondering if you heard the rumor. Things get around now. I'm pretty quick.
Well, and I think it's helpful when you're looking for funding and everybody's aware of what may be coming.
Yes.
You know, to, to be aware of those things.
Yes.
We think you can add and we can help you.
Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions on, uh, any of my proposal or our financial forms?
I'll play over, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Fifteen minutes break.
Oh, now we get a break. Okay, now I'll go get. All worked out.
For one minute, for okay.
Um, the next thing on our agenda, eleven o'clock, is a public hearing for Go Momma Go Arena variance. So, Kim, you can.
All right, yeah, thank you then, Chair. So, this variance request comes from the applicant Julie Thompson, who's also the property owner. And this property that we're talking about is in the Powell Planning Area, and it's in GRP zoning district. Um, and really, the, the property that this variance would apply to are, are two properties. One is a two and a half acre parcel, and one is a three hundred and ninety-six acre parcel. So, we received this variance request application from Julie on February twenty-eighth of this year, including payment and a statement explaining the reasons and manner of which the findings for variance can be satisfied. And Julie is seeking a variance for the consideration of a special use permit that would permit her to host, uh, basically equine events. And I will go into all the details that see that in our staff report on, on page one. These will occur in a thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twelve foot outdoor riding arena. And essentially, mostly it'll be for barrel racing events, but there are all some other equine events, maybe some Williamsburg events, that she would like to participate in in the future. And should this variance be approved, it would allow the applicant, Julie, the opportunity to apply for the special use permit with site plan review for what we have determined is a major recreation facility use. History, in April of two thousand and seven, Julie received actually two special use permits. One was for value-added business, and one was for an agriculture support business. The value-added business was combining, uh, grinding, rolling, um, basically feed products, basically grain, grains. The egg support business was selling those grain products on these two parcels of land. Again, these will also be where this proposed S U P will occur. Madam Chair, so our county regulations prohibit the establishment of three or more principal uses on any lot or parcel. An approval of this S U P would allow that, thus, that is the need for the variance. And Madam Chair, on page one, down at the bottom, under the title, we have multiple principal buildings and uses. That paragraph is right out of our ranks, and if, and I'll just try to briefly read it. And what it says is, "On any lot of parcel of land, establishment of three or more principal buildings or uses for residential, recreation, industrial, commercial, or public uses requires a subdivision permit. Establishment of a third principal building or use shall not be authorized prior to the issuance of a subdivision permit." Madam Chair, so, we, we interpret that paragraph, our, our department interprets that to say you cannot have more than three principal uses on a lot of parcel. That is our interpretation. Hence, the reason for the variance.
Yeah, I can ask later or no, but with, while we're on that, so, how come they were two separate, um, things earlier?
S U Ps?
Yes.
Well, so.
It seemed like they should be combined, yeah.
We, in, in our ranks, we have a value-added business heading, and we have a, a egg support business. So, those are actually in, in, in that table where we have all the uses listed. We have both of those things listed as two separate uses. And even though they were done at one resolution, it appears like there were two separate special use permits that were approved. And those businesses are still operating.
I know, but it seems like that, that both should have been combined, because you're not gonna grind, bag, roll, feed, if you're not gonna sell it. So, it all should have been.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't understand why.
Yeah, we do though, yeah, Commissioner Till, we do have those two uses, separate uses in our ranks.
Um. Aren't there any plans?
Uh, yeah. I, I, yeah, our, our ranks, yeah, could use some attention. I, yeah, I'm not complaining.
I think we know that part.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so anyhow, uh, and, and ultimately, the S U P that Julie is, is wanting to get would be a, a major recreation facility. As I mentioned, this is the GRP zoning district, major recreation facility uses aren't permitted in that district with a special use permit. Again, we feel that special use permit cannot be heard yet because it would be a third principal use. We have on page two, we have the purpose of a variance, applicability, and the procedure for a variance. I mentioned that, uh, the Thompsons are the landlord of these properties. This property is showed in figure one. Um, the, the, all, all in blue, so, the two point five acre piece is that small square just south of lane eleven and a half. The two hundred and ninety-six acre piece is, um, the long diagonal piece. And I say that, the, the egg uses I just talked about, and what Julie would like to, to do are located on these two parcels. Um, and the reason I say her proposed use, the S U P is, is located on this because her riding arena straddles that two and a half acre piece, and it extends over into the almost three hundred acre piece. I hope that makes sense. Um, so anyhow, that, that's the location, um, and it's right, really at the corner of Road eleven and lane eleven and a half. Um, Madam Chair, at the bottom of page three on our staff report, we have a staff note. During the process of reviewing the special use permit application that Julie requested, we discovered these two existing uses, and then our conclusion was, she couldn't move forward. She elected to come to you and ask you for a variance to allow, in this case, three principal uses on these two, uh, parcels. In terms of neighboring land use, she's seen figure two. Agriculture is in the immediate vicinity, there is some residential uses, especially to the northeast. In terms of site characteristics on this property, there is an existing residence where the, the Thompsons live. There's other farm buildings, and there is an outdoor riding arena. Property is relatively flat, you can see in figure three, a total map. Again, I mentioned, it's, it's, uh, in, in the neighborhood of Road eleven and lane eleven and a half. The, uh, Julie provided us with a project plan for what she would like to do and where it would occur. You see that that's in figure four. Again, it, it essentially, uh, relates to the S U P should this variance be approved. In terms of overlay district, this property is not located in an airport or flood overlay district. It is located in an angle overlay district, and so we address those things. In terms of any impacts on egg operations, the arena currently exists. This recreation, you should be approved, will have little to no impact on neighboring egg activities because again, it will, it will just be on occasional days. And in terms of, is that she's vulnerable to egg practices? The applicant is aware of the egg practices, practices occurring on neighboring properties, and her, uh, her participants are likely people, uh, you know, aware of egg operations. Uh, the arena currently exists, it's unknown whether the arena was constructed on egg lands. It probably was, you know, maybe many years ago. In terms of legal notices, this is a public hearing, so we had a, a legal notice that contributed. One date was March twenty-ninth, the other was April twelfth. We also sent notice out to neighboring property owners that occurred on March twenty-fifth. We notified relevant agencies. Fire, uh, district number one responded, they have the ability to provide fire protection, should it be necessary. Park County Treasurer said that property taxes are paid current on this, on these parcels. Public Works responded, they said they have no objection to this variance request. However, they did reference a letter that they submitted in regard to the S U P application. Um, we've not, we've not had any public comments regarding this variance request. Madam Chair, as you know, uh, variance approval standards, there's four that, uh, four conditions that must be met to grant a variance. Number one is, there are special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar to land building or structure which are various to saw and do not apply generally to land or buildings in the neighborhood, and have not resulted from any act of the applicant subsequent to the adoption of the regulations. Applicant's response, there are no special circumstances or conditions peculiar to the land. Our response is, we agree, ours was safe. We agree there, we believe there are no special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar to this land, building, or structure which are various to saw, and do not apply generally to other land or buildings in the neighborhood. And we also mentioned, uh, the applicant already has two approved special use permits. Again, we've already talked about those. And we also mentioned that all lots of parcels and property in the area are subject to GRP zoning. Thus, there are all, all land in the areas prohibited from three principal uses. The second condition for a variance is that circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of land, building, or structure. Um, the applicant's response is, and I, we tried to summarize this. The applicant is asking relief from the strict application of the county regulations regarding the number of principal uses allowed on that individual parcel of land. Applicant said, being limited, um, she feels deprives them of the reasonable use of the land. Our response is, there are no circumstances or conditions that cause the strict application of the, of the regulations to deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land. So, we cite the, the other S U Ps that they already have. Um, we also said the applicant has the ability to use the building's land and other structures consistent with other permits and with our county regulations. Number three, condition number three is granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use thereof. Julie's response, granting of the variance to allow consideration of another special use on the property would allow her to use the arena, um, that was constructed more than a decade ago. She said the use is reasonable, given the property's location close to other equine properties and in egg, uh, egg uses. Um, she also said this use would be a benefit to the community, and the use is compatible with the land use plan. Our response is granting of the variance is not necessary for the reasonable use of the land or structure basically because, as we mentioned above, there are other uses, and there are permitted uses that, that are currently allowed. Number four, condition number four, granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes intended of the regulations, will not compromise the integrity of the land use plan, will not be injurest the property's vicinity or otherwise detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. The applicant responded, again, we, we tried to summarize. The, the activity, the proposed activity is consistent with the land use plan. This type of activity is consistent with lifestyles that Park County and this part of Wyoming. And Julie said that, that, that she believes the use will not be impactful to neighboring properties, and the infrastructure is in place for supportive use. Our response was granting of the variance is not in harmony with purposes intended of the regulations. The proposed use is classified as a major recreation facility, does require a special use permit. Again, we, we said that the applicant already has two approved special use permits on this property, and our interpretation is county regulations prohibit. Um, then, we have conditions for a variance, should you approve it, you can, you know, certainly come up with, um, conditions. We have effect, approval, the variance, and exploration. Madam Chair, we have some findings we found. Um, our, our recommendation is denial of the variance because not all the four conditions happen there. And we're happy to answer questions you might have.
I wanted to start with, and maybe it's a little bit of misunderstanding from the beginning. We said that the variance is being requested on the two acre parcel, the small one, and then the larger parcel, and I'm looking at, that's south of lane eleven and a half?
Yes, yes, and, and I say that be, be, um, because as you know, when you looked at Julie's S U P request, that is on three parcels. But, but I'm saying the variance only applies to the two because those, our understanding is those two parcels are where currently those two S U Ps are being operated at. So, my understanding is those two S U Ps are not in that north, that field north of, um, lane eleven, uh, lane eleven and a half. Does, does that, does that answer your question?
That answered my question, it may get to another question later, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Um, just a second, we'll do the public hearing part. Is there any other questions from the, the commissioners at this time?
Just, Madam Chair, just the process, is that do we have a process to combine the S U Ps that were before? Uh, so that they can combine them like what Commissioner Till was saying was, maybe it should have been one S U P to begin with. Do we have a process of combining the two into one?
Okay, okay, so you did the egg. Madam Chair, I, you know, I stand corrected. Our, our understanding, and Julie could probably confirm this, but so those two existing S U Ps, I believe are only in operation on that big three hundred acre piece.
Uh, two, okay.
Yeah, but no, no, but it is the arena that she wants to use for the S U P. Is, half of it is on that big three hundred acre piece, yeah.
Okay, um, are you able to answer Commissioner Mangle's question about whether there is a process in place in Park County currently that would allow the combination of those first two S U Ps that are basically together? Do you know, we have a process that would allow that to happen?
I, I don't know of any process, I've never heard of that happening. Although, you know, those things are in our county regulations, and essentially, that my understanding is the commissioners can really vary, you know, anything that's not state statute.
Okay, we'll take it to that one. Um, any other questions for the commissioners? Okay, and let's go ahead with the public hearing, it is a public hearing. So, if you would like to, to stand and state your name, please, uh, for the record, and then any comments from the public, we would ask that each of you stand and state your name if you have comments to make.
I'm Julie Thompson, the applicant on this. Uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, you did a very good job explaining. Um, and you already said my comments on paperwork, and I think you won't hear that. So, unless you have questions for me specifically, I think everything was covered, unless my family thinks there's something to say.
Just that, in your area, I know I work on lane eleven and a half, and it's thirty-five there, and then it goes to forty-five. What is it on your property?
Forty-five.
It's forty-five there.
Any other public comments? Does one, Julie's the half, I don't bear all this.
I'm Susan Ram. I live on Road one, but I take eleven and a half to go, to go sometimes. We've gone past where they have the rodeos before. Which is another issue. I don't rodeo, but I do love walking to go and watch them put on their performances. It's something for the community, and we just very much enjoy watching them. And these guys are putting everything out there that they have to keep everybody safe and everybody. Just wanted to say, I'm not in rodeo scene, but because I really love to go watch them work with their horses and just see the things that they do, it's right there in my community, I don't have to have the background for who to see. I can just do it out of my back thought, so, I just wanted to say.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, is this, is this the point that, the discussion where we address the parking?
I guess that's a question, because the parking is north of the road, which is not included in the land that this variance is being requested. So, I think the variance has to be dealt with at this time, and the S U P would be addressed in the next.
Yeah, I would agree with that very much. And I have a lot of points about the parking, and I still quite agree with it. I would agree with you.
Okay, so, at this time, we are dealing with the variance, um, on the property. So, if there's no other, other comments?
Madam Chair, I move to post-public hearing.
Two seconds.
Move to second to close the public hearing. Further discussion on the motion, right now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, pleasure to the board on the variance.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, that we do approve the variance. I mean, it's, it's Commissioner Till brought forward. Those two probably should have been combined, um, but they weren't, and I don't see a, I don't see a problem with creating this variance.
Second, to approve the variance. Any further discussion?
Chair, I just want to add, I agree with the, the motion, I just want to say. Forward, I don't understand why we ever had a third principal, uh, on a piece of property, land, or two land persons, uh, a little part in the land use plan regulation. I definitely want to see that renewed, because I think we have home business not allowing the public to diversify to the best of their abilities. And on the variance, as far as staff, I appreciate everything you do, but when we get down into the four criterias, um, that is so much based on opinion, um, personal property, what you feel is best used, and we're saying no, I mean, what are we to judge of what, what that is best used for? Uh, so, at any rate, I'd like to relook at that as well.
I appreciate the conversation, we may have to look back a little bit, um, and see if there was any documentation.
I know this is, I just want to bring that up.
Yep, I agree.
How important the land use plan is.
And, here, no further discussion, um, motion to approve the variance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-seven.
Okay, well, we are right on schedule, so our public hearing for eleven-twenty is the public hearing for Go Momma Go Arena Special Use Permit number two thirty-three. So, with that, Mr. Yellen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this special use permit actually is going to be on, on three parcels of land, we've already talked about that. The applicant is Julie Thompson, the planning area is Powell, the zoning district is GRP. We received the special use permit application on February fourth of this year. There was a description in there of the proposed activities, a site plan showing the arena location, parking, and access. There was a description in there of approved activities, a site plan showing the arena location, parking and access. And then additional application materials will receive on February eleventh of this year. So the requested action is approval of the special use permit with site plan review. To host equine events, essentially or mostly, my understanding is barrel racing. There will also be gym kahanas. There'll be cattle sorting and cuttings. There'll be some equine clinics. And my understanding is Julie would like to also possibly have some livestock shows in the future. This is in an existing thirty-seven thousand five hundred square foot outdoor riding arena. Um, history, I mentioned that, oh, I've already mentioned about the special use permits that were approved two thousand seven. Excuse me, and configuration regulations prohibit, um, three of war pants for uses. The variances you just, uh, heard was approved. We classify this use, this proposed use as major recreation facility. That is any commercial recreation business or outdoor recreation facility with over five thousand square feet of floor area or over one acre of land developed in association with the use. And Madam Chair, as you know, I know you read this, outdoor writing arenas is one of the specific samples listed for that use. Ownership of all three of these properties are under Steve and Julie Thompson. This property is located, again, in this outdoor writing arena and of course there's parking associated with it on a two and a half parcel of land, uh, two and a half acre, uh, portion of a two and a half acre parcel of land, a portion of a three hundred ninety-six acre parcel of land, and a portion of a seventy acre parcel of land. These seven acres is north of lane eleven and a half. That portion of the seventy acre piece will just be utilized for parking. My understanding is just for contestants. Property is owned by the Thompsons. Again, this property is at the intersection of Route eleven and County Lane eleven and a half. I mentioned this is in the GRP zoning district. Major recreation uses are permitted in the zoning district, providing S U P is approved. Neighbor land uses, again, this property is mostly surrounded by ag uses. There is some residential to the north. I mentioned that the applicants have residence on the property. There are other farm buildings. There are other uses. There is the arena. Property is rolled to the flat. You see that in figure three. Again, I'll mention that Julie provided us a, a site plan, a very nice site plan in figure four. It shows the arena. It shows spectator parking. It shows entrances and exits. It shows the road and it shows contestant parking to the fore. In terms of legal notices, this is a public hearing. We had notices in the Powell Tribune. One occurred on March twenty-ninth of this year. One occurred on April twelve. Written notice was mailed out to neighboring property owners on March twenty-fifth. We shared the staff report with the applicant and with all of you prior to today. In terms of agency referrals, we heard back from a number of agencies. Wyoming Department of Ag said they will not need to be involved unless Julie, uh, should this be approved, unless Julie decides to have some food sales, then Department of Ag will be involved. Park County Treasurer said property taxes are paid. Fire District One said they can provide fire protection on this, on these parcels. Game of Fish said they have no wildlife concerns. Weed and pest, uh, Mary did an initial inspection. She said a management plan will not be required. She's recommending best practices for weed management to adhere to. Public Works responded. Um, in a public hearing with P and Z on March sixteen, Public Works commented about their concerns about participants, spectators and, and animals crossing the road. And they strongly encouraged moving the parking area to the south side of lane eleven and a half or required a traffic, uh, control study. In a letter on March twenty-four, Public Works addressed several things. They commented, uh, lane eleven and a half is a secondary road. They commented on average traffic counts. They talked about the two access points. They did mention safety concerns of the parking on the north side. Public Works did visit the property and did visit, when they're out there, did visit with the applicant. They said they felt like there was a trend towards increased traffic. Applicant told Public Works at the time that they've been using this site for the purpose of more than five years, would like to execute a plan to ensure public safety. And Public Works commented that the Board of County Commissioners has afforded to regulate county right-of-way and Public Works said they will not require a runoff erosion control plan. Madam Chair, I will mention too, I don't have it in here, but we did hear back from Shoshone Irrigation District, I believe in a letter, and they said that this use will not affect any of their infrastructure. We did not receive anything back from Rocky Mountain Power, but this, the agreement does have power. In terms of public comments, Madam Chair, we received many public comments supporting this use. And I believe all of those were supplied. We had the, if you had a chance to read those letters. We did receive comments, verbal comments from two individuals that concerned about public safety regarding this use. Planning and zoning heard this application on March sixteen. They recommended approval with conditions. You saw all their conditions. There were eight. Um, I'll just, I'll just mention several of them. Number two was the applicant shall receive a variance approval. Of course, that just happened. Also, number three was the applicant shall get a response back from Public Works. That has been met. Number seven, the applicant shall work with Public Works to provide a traffic and safety plan to the planning and zoning department prior to today's meeting. And our comment was the applicant did meet with Public Works. However, to our, our knowledge, a traffic and safety plan has not yet been developed. In terms of approval standards for a special use permit compatibility and impacts. Basically, again, what the, what the applicant said has said this facility will be used to host primarily equine events. It will occur during daylight hours. However, on non-event days, there will be some area competitors that may use the arena. Julie expects the use to occur from June or October of each year. She expects no more than one event per week and no more than twenty events during a season. Julie feels like on average, there'll be anywhere from fifty to seventy contestants and less than twenty spectators per event. And Julie expects per event, uh, forty to fifty vehicles pulling horse trailers. Uh, Julie talked about a crow's nest on the south side of the arena. It's cornball and skids. And during an event, this, this booth will have amplified music and will be used to address spectators. So there will be an address system during the event. She'll have no overnight camping or overnight stays. She'd like to find safe bleachers. She, this time she doesn't have any. And so she expects if this to be approved, spectators will provide their own chairs. And Julie said she's interested in possibly contracting with food vendors. She feels like this, this use will have very low impact on adjacent properties. A lot of the adjacent properties is ag production. She said there will be a small increase in noise. However, that noise will be limited to event days and just music and announcements. Julie said there'll be no use of starting guns or alarms. Julie plans to water the arena as needed to control dust. And she said the events will be in daylight hours. She proposes no artificial light. This use has no buildings or structures within twenty feet of County Road Right-of-Away. No covenants are proposed or existing. But, uh, no outdoor lighting. This property has no, no non-conformities. We've had no nuisances reported. Soil's, uh, report refills not applicable because there'll be no new structures. In terms of services and infrastructure and access, the parcels do have legal, legal access. And the arena and spectator parking will have access from County Road eleven. The contestant parking will have access from County Lane eleven and a half. I mentioned Public Works already. In terms of domestic water, there really is no northwestern water or well water, uh, available for the use. Julie, um, will plan to, should this be approved, will plan to supply a limited amount of bottled water and/or expect spectators and competitors to bring their own water. I mentioned irrigation. In terms of parking, um, for contestants, Julie would like those folks to park in that area of north of lane eleven and a half. We feel like that parking aerial wise is sufficient. It's, it's a, I think a seven acre piece is what she's identified for parking. However, we have a note on the middle of page ten. Our note, access the arena, competitors and the horses will be required to cross Park County Lane eleven and a half without the benefit of a designated pedestrian crosswalk. We feel like this action is a potential hazard and does not appear to be consistent with public health, safety and welfare. In terms of sewage and wastewater, um, the applicant would, would like to provide chemical toilets. We recommend, uh, for each event, four chemical toilets and immediately empty after each event. In terms of utilities, there are utilities on this property. Really, the only thing necessary is electricity. That's provided by Rocky Mountain Power. The applicant is not proposing any permanent signs. The applicant would like to use, uh, unless a traffic plan says something else, she would like to use sandwich board signs to caution motorists of, uh, pedestrians and horses coming up. And solid waste disposal will be, will be conducted according to your rates. In terms of an S U P, no specific criteria identified for this use. This use is not in, uh, flood plain or overland district. It isn't an ag overland district. Again, in terms of ag overland district findings, any impacts from this use of ag operations? The applicant expects their, them to be minor. Uh, this land was, was roofed by ag production years ago. Weed and pests has addressed concerns. No paths for domestic pets are expected to impact neighboring ag uses. Solid waste will be dealt with and irrigation facilities will not be impacted by this use. In terms of vulnerability of this use to ag practices, again, um, Julie and, um, and the Thompsons are well aware of the neighboring ag practices. And our belief and her belief is that participants and spectators know it should be used to ag use occurring in these areas. Um, site plan review is required for major recreation facilities and the size of this operation dictated that we did go through site plan review. I will just comment on things that have not already been talked about. We don't anticipate this use to deal or store or dispose of any hazardous substances. This use is not expected to impact any lakes, reservoirs or steam streams. This use will not impact any federal wetlands. Erosion and erosion control and runoff plan is not required. No new structures are proposed. Public Works, uh, said they would not require one. And this use is not expected to impact any air quality standards. And again, I mentioned that Julie is planning, Thompsons are planning to water this facility if necessary. This use is in the Powell planning area, so special site plan review is not required. Madam Chair, we have a list of findings. We have some, um, recommended conditions and we're happy to answer questions you might have.
Okay, just before we get to the big question in the room, um, just asking one about kind of the matter with barrel horses and things like that. So there's no livestock water either? They would have to bring their own? Is that something that you advertise to allow contestants to know they've got to carry that kind of water with them? Are you speaking my name? Yeah, the owner.
Um, we, we discussed it. The, the water on my well did not test for human consumption, but it is okay for animals. So we've always provided a hose as courtesy, but don't have to. A lot of barrel racers do bring their own water because they don't want their water supplied to come from something else.
I'm just wanting to tell you of that knowledge.
Madam Chair, I know we're going to be on the discussion on the parking. I'd like to ask staff a couple of questions. It's all about the recommendations, not, not concerning staff, whether that is number four and number seven of the conditions. Number four is asked the applicant to contact, if applicant contracts with food vendors, Wyoming Department of Ag Corp must be contacted. I read the email from the Wyoming Department of Ag Corp to Vicki and I believe, my interpretation is she is referring to if Thompsons is selling, selling food, not a vendor. A contracted vendor has inspected their trucks or their trailers. And they're, they're, they're inspected separately by the, by the US, by Wyoming Department of Ag Corp. So I don't know why we, why the applicant would be required to contact if they have a food truck there. And it specifically says the applicant con, if the applicant contracts with food vendors, you know, they have to, and I don't think that's necessary. If you could explain the reasoning, but I've read their email twice and I go, I think they're referring to that applicant's selling the food not a vendor, it might be.
But I know at the, Madam Chair, the fair, I'm just thinking, I think at times inspectors will show, so maybe they just need to be aware of when the events are possibly, or because they do hold the specific food vendor to a certain standard or something.
It's just to know that that vendor is certified.
Unless there's a notification. We, we can, we don't.
But if I say I have a food truck and I contract with Julie to go to her place, who's checking to make sure that I get any kind of a license or that I would, you know?
Wyoming Department of Ag Corp, if, on your food truck or hers, fine. That is between you and, you and the, yes.
If they know I'm doing it, if they know I'm doing it. That's my point. It's just maybe just a point of information to make sure everybody's above board, whether it's.
That's what I think. I don't think that's what, that's what's said on that. Number seven, why limit the number of chemical toilets? You know, I guess our thought is if, if they're unnecessary and, and certainly it's something that you can adjust or, or eliminate completely. Okay, I was just gonna ask staff, why, why do you even have, I see a minimum, but not a limit, not a limit. I mean, even the accused says that you need one toilet per, for each. You know, based, Madam Chair, they may want six toilets. Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, you know, I, I guess if there was ever an issue where one, something could spill, you know, we, we're, we try to be concerned about human waste as best we can.
Madam Chair, that's gonna be my question because, you know, there's, there's a potential that this could grow. And putting a limit, I, I disagree with putting a limit on it.
Okay. I know we have other questions, but let's go ahead and open the public hearing part. And is there any public that would like to address this issue? And if so, if you would be standing.
I made some copies of a piece of paper. I was wondering if I could pass them. Do we have, do we have twenty minutes like the last one or do we have longer?
No, we're okay.
Just to give you a little history on those last two special use permits. Uh, when we were told we needed them, my husband and I were both against them, but we were of different minds of thinking because he was thinking, we're both thinking, you know, this is ag. We, we harvest these products. We need to do something with them to sell them. So we should be able on our farm to sell our products, make them and sell them. But county thought otherwise, so Julie, being who she is, says, let's jump through the hoops and do what we have to do to be legal because I want to do in business. Um, which I held firm. I took charge. He was polite. We went in, we did all our things. Um, and then Tim French was on the board. And he's the one, he says, why, why do you think you have to go through this? And we were told at the time and the people on the planning zoning aren't here anymore, but they wanted to limit us. They didn't want us to be the next big arena. And Tim said, why wouldn't we want that? And I, that's when it dawned on me, like, he's right. Why would Park County not want the next arena right here in Powell? Um, so, but it was too late to go back and argue and, and we got our permits and we've been doing business ever since. And so if you'd allow me this time, I, I kind of think I want to fight a little bit on, on getting this. And so if you'd allow me this time, I I kind of think I want to fight a little bit on getting this special use permit. We agreed to do the variance. Thank you, Lloyd, for bringing up why those other two weren't in one. We wouldn't have had to do that. So now here we are. Thank you for the variance. We're gonna go forward. The big question, we're in, will be parking? So I don't know if you want me to talk about that now. On your the picture on the front you got there, we just went out and took that this morning. I didn't take that five years ago. But you can see my daughter in at the at the intersection, I think. Can you see her in the picture? That's that's the view you get. And that's approximately five hundred feet where that sign is. Those are the signs we used last time. And basically, it was because we didn't I mean, we we were supposed to have a special use permit. We didn't know, so we were on our own, and we just wanted to be safe. That's what we came up with. Now, after reading that manual for the the traffic control, I understand there's rule and regulations on the signs where they have to be set, how tall they have to be, what color they have to be and all that. So this does not fit that bill. But five years ago, it worked just fine. We didn't have any incidents that I remember. Don't remember any close calls. We we always started in July during barley harvest where the semis were going back and forth. And even the semis were polite, slowed down. I still feel it was a good cautionary measure that worked for this event on this road. I don't feel like we endangered anybody. All respect due to the entities involved. I understand they're doing their jobs, that they want to protect us. I am going to maintain that we live in a free society. And with freedom comes responsibility. We have the responsibility to choose whether we want to attend an event. We have the responsibility to choose if it's safe enough to cross a road. In addition to that, the event we're putting on is a barrel race. These girls at barrel race get on horses that run very, very fast, turn corners really fast, and run home fast. So we're not really afraid of crossing a road. We I, as far as I know, nobody can consider it a danger at the time. I know the parents watch their children. I know a lot of parents watch other children. And I'm not disagreeing that something could happen. That something could happen anywhere, something could happen up here on the street. And I think we've done everything we can to keep people safe. And I approve, or I would appreciate you understanding that that we're doing all we can.
First, I want you to understand that I have full support of the event and what you guys do. I mean, a lot of you out there understand I come from a little bit of a horse background. But and and I understand when you're saying that you're not concerned about the folks crossing the road. The concern I also have is for the folks that are driving that road. Not just, you know, I, you know, I know what it takes to take a horse across the street. You gotta pay attention, but if something occurs, what about the folks that are driving the road? What about the folks got family in there? You know, they didn't have, they didn't have that choice of someone crossing that road. And I wouldn't, I, if there wasn't an option, if there wasn't an option for the parking, I would go through, suggest you go through everything. We go through everything to make it where you could, you know, bring them across. But it appears to me that there is, there is an option for the parking.
Steve Thompson, there is an option for the parking, but it would be taking more ag ground out that is very suitable for raising crops at the time. Where the pasture across the road, it's just, it irrigates the way it is. You don't have to have corrugations, easy to park in. We take this other out. Well, you can't really water it without corrugations. You can't park in corrugations. So now we're gonna have a dirt parking lot or gravel. And that's just not near as nice as the grass going across the road.
And I fully understand that, Julie, I'm sorry.
And, you know, I understand the dangers, but you go stand in the middle of that road. Where it is, it is very open. You can see two miles only, three quarters of them all the other way. The traffic, approximately two, a car every two and a half minutes. That's plenty of time to look both ways, get across. And as drivers, they have to have some responsibility also. And with these trailers, as you can see in the one there, they're parked quite away from the road, which keeps it pretty open for the drivers to see if there's something coming. And so I I know it's a danger, but there's lots of dangers in this society.
Hope here's a little talk of the, of everything. Thanks, Madam Chair, Brian Edwards, county engineer. Hear me okay? Turning up my volume. So first of all, I want to say, since the P and Z meeting, we did go out and meet about a month ago with Thompsons, the great family, I think is a great event. My family, we participate in those type of things, and we'd be a participant there, you know. So I think it's great for the community, definitely a supporter. And I've told them that. I think the best way to summarize, I think our letter pretty much covers everything. But I would say, we're tasked with public safety of the roadway. That's that's kind of our number one thing that we center everything about. It's important to just remember that I agree that right now and based on the past, what I think we have in our office wouldn't be concerns, they'd be probably reservations. You know, we just something that we feel like need to keep an eye on it. We are seeing traffic grow. You've approved one subdivision earlier today. Or when I say approved, approved for the next step. We know we got another one coming. Growth Development, that is a secondary collector route that connects two highways. And on secondary collector routes, and if you read the definition that's in my letter, those type routes aren't aren't intended to have traffic controls are slowed down. Those are through routes connected to highways. You know, is it done? Yes. I think what they're planning to do, it's not like it's something that's gonna be every day. It'd be a weekend, it'd be one day. You know, so they're looking at a control for an event. So to me, what they're looking to do is very similar to like a construction. Very simple, you know, it'd be, it'd be like an event. Obviously, what they, if you were to approve it and and require or allow the parking on the north side of the street, adding on to what we said in our letter, we think that I'm not gonna say a traffic control study because I don't think they need to spend a bunch of money on engineers and, you know, looking at that kind of thing. I think we know what we got there. But what worries me is my reservation becoming concerns five years from now, ten years from now. This is an S U P. Their event grows and the development grows in there. And so that's what worries me. And so I, we've been thinking about it. I thought, if you do decide to go that route, to me, probably the best way to handle it would be some sort of a right-of-way permit through our office or something on the S U P where you have the authority to withdraw the S U P, or not withdraw, S U P, revoke it if if things became an issue or a problem. And I thought another way to do that would be to make it a condition that the applicant provide us a traffic control plan that, and in conjunction with a perpetual right-of-way permit application to where we can work with them on the traffic control, the signage. As Ms. Thompson said, there's, you know, M E T C D standards. We definitely don't want the old plan, we want to follow the standards. And then it's the responsibility authority thing for implementing the plan. Just like the construction zone, that falls on the contract. You know, the contractor is responsible for that construction zone. And to me, that's what this is. It's an event zone on a secondary collector. So first question is whether or not you want to even allow that, to have that parking. I don't know that that's good long-term planning to have an event split by a secondary collector. It is done. We all know places where it's done. If this was on a local access road, more powerful. So anyways, I I'm trying to think, be solutions oriented. If if you do decide that we want to take a measured approach, I think the right-of-way permit perpetual might help work to the.
Yeah, if I could, you know, and I I think that's all our concern, not what's happening today or what happened tomorrow. But in the future, as your, as your, your activities grow, I know county continues to grow. Brian, quick question. How often do we do your traffic counts on a road like that?
We do them every two to two to three years.
Three years.
I think this last one we did was two thousand eighteen. And we'll probably try to get some this summer again, too.
And what did what did it count last time? I think it said a staff run.
Three hundred, three hundred and something, which, like I say, you stand out there when we were standing up. I don't know if we counted one or two vehicles, you know. So it's not like it's a lot, but there's busy times. And are the busy times when, you know, when they're having their events on a weekend? Probably not.
You know, to me, ideally speaking, would be to move everything south of the road.
Yeah.
But I understand your concern about that, I would call it for over there. And now your contestant parking, if you have on the north side of the road, the proposed parking, that's hay ground? That's not corrugated?
It's just a pasture.
Okay, so you're not growing crops on other, just grass, right? All right. I'm just wondering if if we could have something in the S U P, have some type of trigger mechanism. Whereas the daily count, say, got over six hundred or seven hundred, seven hundred, I guess, kind of the breaking point.
Yeah, that that's, that's the breaking point for going from a secondary collector to a major collector. I think it's that, it's time of year, it's ag, you know, they all know that. It's, I don't know if we'll ever see a problem or have a problem. And I didn't want, we don't have the time for it. I don't want them to have to be coming in for a new permit or or every two or five years. I think it's more as long as we have the authority and we start seeing some trend or concern that we could at least call them in and say, hey, we need to update your traffic control plan or reevaluate. Because I guess I'm worried about the future.
Well, I mean, you know, that's all our biggest concern is the safety problem. I'm saying on Powell sometime in the future. So, you know, to me, we could go the route with some type of trigger mechanism. Say if the traffic count got over six hundred, we would, that S U P would require you to move everything south of the highway. And that would solve the problem.
Stop that.
And and in lieu of that, if we did come up with some right-of-way permit for them, you know, even if entailed, at whenever you have an event, you have to have flaggers out there on the highway. Get off the traffic and let the horse cross. Something along those lines.
I I agree.
I'm Maria Virchold, and these are my parents. I live not too far from them, so I'm, and I work on the farm. So I am there every day, and I see a lot of what's happening. And I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I feel like there's a big part of this picture that's not been talked about yet. And I shared it with Public Works when they came and visited. That road is labeled a secondary collector road. And we've seen the growth, not only in the traffic, but in the number of houses on our road. And the thing that's not being talked about is as a driver on that road every single day. When I was growing up, we didn't have joggers and bikers and walkers and all of those obstacles as a driver. As I've gotten older and more houses have been built, families are moving in. We, as drivers, have lots of things we have to pay attention for, more so now than we used to have because they're not using the road just as a roadway. They're walking their dogs. We've got one family that walks their cat. They have their little kids on bicycles. I mean, all day long, there's families out on that road. So it's not like we're the only thing causing a slowdown. So maybe it's the purpose of that particular road that's gonna change because as you approve more subdivisions, there's more families, there's more joggers, there's more bikers. That is where they're recreating. And so I think that needs to figure in, too. I know down in Thermoplis, the little cross you used to take, that used to be a thru fair. It is no longer there. It says you'll be fined seven hundred and fifty dollars if you use it to go through because they want to protect their children and their residents that have been built up in that area. So maybe the purpose of the road is what's gonna change in five or ten years and not necessarily everything's gonna be limited that's already there. Just a different way of looking at it because I've seen the changes. I've seen how many people utilize it as a place to get out and move, including horses. Like people ride their horses almost every day. We see somebody out and about training or coming or everything. So just a different viewpoint.
Are you have a question in looking at the picture you provided? Just for clarification, I don't even know if it's possible, but there is a lot of, I'd say farm equipment type things parked south of the house on some dirt area.
That's my equipment yard.
Yeah, equipment yard, yeah.
That's not near big enough for forty trailers.
There's no way you can clear things enough to make that work?
Not to keep my farm, which is my my first investment in life and my my way of making a living is my farm. That's my farm equipment.
We would have to move those other two S U Ps and reforen, move all the grain beds as well as we did.
That is also where I manufacture.
The other S U Ps, okay. All right, just trying to look at options.
I appreciate that, thank you.
No, Madam Chair, if I could, you know, something that Commissioner Lewis has touched on is about the, not necessarily the people with the horses, but also the people riding the cars. I think we have to consider, trying to look into our first of all, down the line. A lot of people moving there, just pointed out, things change. They're not used to working with livestock. They're not used to how livestock reacts to past moving tracks, things like that. I can remember years ago when I was in the outfitting business, and I'd run a hundred head of horses from winter pasture to summer pasture down the highway. You know, nobody ever said a thing, we all did it. If you did it today, you'd be surrounded by sheriff deputies, you know. So things change. Looking at the future, we need to consider those.
Any other public comments?
Madam Chair, move we close the public hearing.
Second. So we've instructed to close the public hearing for the discussion on the motion. Have a little favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, we're not in a position where we have to make a decision on this, on this today. I, there's a couple of questions I have possibly about the legality of of entering into the agreement, a traffic plan agreement with the applicants. And so I'm, and I'm just one of five, I'm likely to make a decision on this today. It's a important decision. I'd like some more information as I move forward.
Could, I don't, I don't like your question, Brian, you would probably have it. There's no question as far as the legality, we're right away from it. I don't, I don't believe.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think, I understand that Mr. Livingston's concerned that we've talked about it, too. We didn't talk about it with Thompsons, it gets into that whole responsibility liability. I think you, as the board, are responsible for public safety of the county right-of-way, which threw us tasked us to do that. And we often do it all the time for construction zones. You're, they, they get a right-of-way permit, they give us, you know, a traffic control plan, and we approve that, and we kind of monitor that, but they go away. On a perpetual bill on a bid like that, I think it might be good to reach out to the county attorney and talk about best way to do that, because I don't know of any other perpetual type of advantage, traffic, because you gotta keep it at what, forty-five, fifty mile an hour plus through the, definitely. And I think the applicant agrees, too, that and they've done it in the past during events, maybe slow traffic through that area. And so how you do that perpetually, and what the who's responsible, what's responsibility? I can see some good questions for the county chair.
I think that's the main thing, is finding out where our liability responsibility is in doing this, whichever way we go. So I I agree that we probably need to.
Sure, I, my question, I guess, going with this right-of-way permit, basically, traffic plan. I I know from my experience of working in construction, I mean, it's a pain in the butt. So, I mean, if they're, if if we think the Thompsons, the county country required to a traffic plan mirrored to the same as a right-of-way construction plan every time they have an event, I think then we have that covered. And I really like Mr. Kilden's trigger point, that once it reaches a certain traffic count, that we have to revisit the S U P for the, for the purpose of the northern parking and crossing roads. I know that we're here for the safety, and I understand that. But I also believe that if they follow the same precautions of any contractor looking at a right-of-way every time they have an event, meaning proper studies, I mean, multiple, it's, they may look at this pro- this, if you haven't already, looked in detail of the safety signage and use for a traffic, a a a right-of-way permit. Then you decide, you know, this can be a pain in the butt, we better go to plan B, C, or D. So therefore, I guess, I have no reason, I don't know. Well, I I'm not at the point that that's, that we need to do any more study on the traffic issue, I think. Although if you go down that road, I have no problem revisiting condition four to clarify whether the state of agriculture is requesting inspection on food lenders, because I'm telling you, they're already inspected.
I think that's a different issue.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
One quick clarification, Lloyd, I guess we were thinking on our end of having to uh, review and approve a traffic plan or right away permit for each event. What, what we envisioned was maybe it's a couple of years, five, you know, three years. Uh, we just want to be able to have some authority to where we can pull that back or or renew it, you know, as traditions change. And uh, because we don't have the time either, we don't want to be messed with right away permits every time. So. I don't care, Brian, so are you asking him for a perpetual permit? Notification of an event? And then that once it's basically the traffic plan is gonna be the same.
Yeah.
At every event.
Yeah.
You just want notification that in, we could put a condition that said, you know, two week notification or something that you're going to be doing this and and therefore, and then there's their responsibility to adhere because as a contractor, the same thing.
Yep, I think that's.
That's what you're thinking?
We do.
Well, kind of the thought process with like a standard M U T C D plan is they would know exactly, I mean, they could go out and set hubs or whatever they wanted in the right of way. This is exactly where they have to place the signs. They would have one plan that was submitted that we would know that has, that traffic control has to be in place so many hours before their event starts.
Right.
And we can check on them if we need to, uh, that's just, you know, what we do with all contractors and stuff, but basically, it's just one plan that they submit and knowing that that has to be a condition of every event. Not, they don't have to call us and say, hey, we're having, you know, it's, it's not on them to call us, but we know that every time there is an event, those signs go up.
Right.
You know, whether it be, and they have to be the right distances, I mean, this is gonna be several signs or something like this and this, you know, it's, it's pretty standard, so it would be pretty simple. You'd have a guy in a pickup go out and put them all where they're supposed to go and then go take them down when you're done. Is, is kind of how the traffic control side of things would be.
And that's why I'd say I don't see, what, what board is you want to study?
Look, it's not a matter, it's not a matter of study, and I'm asking the legality of us being able to do that, a perpetual permit, that's the question that has been arisen by our, by our engineer, is do we have the legality to turn this over to the, to the Thompsons on a, on a perpetual deal? We have the, we have the legal right right now to ask them to to uh, do a traffic plan for every event. We're not, that's, that makes absolutely zero sense. If we're gonna move forward with this, I want it to be as easy as possible. When we have it determined that that, that we can do that, that's the question I want answered. Yeah, I don't, I'm not asking that they go out and do a traffic plan every, for every single event. It's can we issue a, a long-term perpetual permit? That's all I need to, you know, if we can't do it, then it creates a different set of problems.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I just can say, I mean, it, it looks like we could make this thing work the post way you have it mapped out. I think that's, that's certainly my intention. Uh, initially, I was thinking, well, we can go ahead and move forward with this today and get it done, but after questions that Mr. Livingston raised and also some question that Brian has, and I've been on this board for quite a while and we've done some things in the past and found out after the fact, we made a mistake. So in there, yeah, it's very difficult to go back and make that mistake out of this case. Because of that, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion and we table the decision on this until May third, give about a week and a half. You think that's enough?
That's fair. Well, it's not, I'll second for discussion. The public hearing has been closed. We do not have to do a specific time not to revisit this. We can, we can anticipate doing it, but we do not have to, to uh, make a specific time.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'll add Brian this quick, if I could. Is a week and a half long enough to get these quick indent?
I think so.
Okay.
I just, I'm just, I don't think the motion is necessary.
Okay, the other thing I want to clarify is that in this, I'm sure the next week or two is the the trigger point, if we decide to add that on the traffic count and stuff, I know planning and zoning is, is overwhelmed with what they're doing and keeping track of calendaring issues. Or having Public Works remember to notify planning and zoning when the traffic number gets to this high. Where is that trigger point gonna be and whose responsibility is that gonna be to notify that? I just, there's probably a way, I just don't know what that is yet, and we need to be sure that we have all of our processes in a row before we were to approve it if we had decided to add that as a trigger point to know how that would work.
I just want them to be rest assured, I, we're not trying to impede you to have a, continue with the events. My intent, it's at least this commissioner's intent that you continue to, to be able to do this and have these events. We just want to figure out how, how to move forward. Make sure you can.
And since the next one will not be a public hearing, and we'll give another conversation about the fact that you need to watch our agendas, we will try to notify you um, and get information out from the planning zoning office or from Public Works when this will be listed on the agenda to be dealt with. Um, after we get the answers to our questions, it may be May third, if we can't get the answers, it might be May seventeenth. Either way, if you would keep track of our agendas or give Molly a call to make sure when it gets on the agenda, make sure you can be here to know what happens. We've had a couple instances where that did happen, and we want to be sure you know. Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, my motion was heard for May third.
Yeah, so. You want to withdraw that?
Well, I mean, I will, but I want to keep this thing moving, moving forward.
How about in May? In case we need this.
In May, all right.
I will accept that.
Preferably May third.
Right. Just not sure to get the answer back quick, but we'll. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All of those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. So, we will get answers to our questions and concerns and. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah. There's her. Yeah, that's, that's.
That's how we feel.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a.
Hey, guess what? 115. Is everybody ready? The first thing on our agenda is the 2022 County Commissioner Scholarship Selection. Everybody filled out the form over the last couple of weeks of reviewing the scholarship applications, which we had 17, one of which was a renewal. All three schools I think were well represented with Cody Powell and Maiti C. We seem to have a lot of people who show up, so that was good. I'm doing math, unless I didn't do the math correctly. What I would show from Powell would be Jaden Asher. What I show from Cody is Allison Edwards. And from Maiti C, Mickey Ogden. No, not Mickey, sorry. And then the renewal with Madeline Horton. There's that tie, we'll turn in the numbers. And then if there is a situation where someone's not attending a Wyoming school, I'm calling, I'll be able to move forward whatever needs to happen. Cool, and please motion to approve those scholarship recipients.
So, motion, let me sure. Second.
Second to approve this.
We need to list the alternates in that motion. Yeah, we need it.
Okay.
On the count. So.
That matters, I have those if you want.
Are you looking at?
Well, Beth Brazelton would be the second for Powell, if he chose my school. Okay. Calvin Erickson, right, D.C. And then there's a tie, excuse me, from Cody with both with a score of 33, Grace Pales and Kenley Volger. So I'm not sure which of those two you want to choose as alternate. Grace Pales.
Kenley Volger. That's all we need.
At least that's a rundown.
Can you decipher between weighted and unweighted at all?
Unweighted.
Some types.
Or weighted and unweighted. Well, if you go higher.
So I would include Kenley Volgers as the alternate.
Or Cody?
Yeah.
Kenley?
Yeah. And the, and including Madeline Horton as a renewal.
Your second still hold?
Second still holds.
Would have been second to approve the scholarship that was listed. Any further discussion? All in a favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Okay. That's done.
You have to try to replace them.
How do you did it?
Oh, did it?
They just don't want to meet us until they have.
Yeah. He's coming, you guys, for Zach.
Oh, yeah.
Lucy Jane didn't have that. It's a little like that. It's one of the holes.
Yeah. It's kind of crazy. I was not expecting out of everything. I was not expecting camping. But it's been pretty fun.
Right here.
We'll give you a couple more months and see what you think. So with that, our 125 is to revisit the contacts and polling discussion. There were extenuating circumstances that came forward, so. Let me go.
Because of the new information we received, that was the way to make the motion. We reconsidered outside of that.
Question, a second to reconsider. Our record. Motion, a second to reconsider our recommendation on the Jackson Pollock. Further discussion? You got all in a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chairman, what were the extenuating circumstances?
We'll get there. One of the things that came to light, at least to me, after this, probably maybe a little more beforehand. But one of the things that came to light was that USGS does not verify land ownership when they make these recommendations and have no consideration for whether the land is government owned or privately owned. And not knowing that, I did not realize that the, I don't know if anybody did, that the land was privately owned and that the landowners had not been contacted in any way, shape, or form about this request. That makes a difference to me in how that's handled. We asked, I asked Molly to contact USGS and specifically asked that question and they said, no, they do not contact the landowners. That they feel that that could be done at the local level. I'm not sure that's the county commissioner's job to chase that kind of thing. So anyway, with that new information, that's why I wanted to run back.
I'm sure I did contact Mr. Martin McCarty, who's the general manager of the Two Dot Ranch in FS Ranches. And he has shared with me that the owners are not.
Any other discussion?
Other than I agree with you.
Thank you. I came to listen. I wondered why you would revisit what looked to me to be a sound public decision on the record. And I'm a little bit puzzled by this. Couple of important points. It's not your decision to approve or disapprove a name. You render an opinion to those entities who actually do the naming, certification, and even our state board, Bureau of Names, which is the division of the State Engineers Office, rising. Even they don't have the final say on naming, renaming, or renaming of anything. They still have to kick it upstairs to the feds. And I believe if you were to go a little deeper with this with the federal people, you would find that the private landowner doesn't have anything to say about this. We're talking geologic landmarks. They can say that. Mr. McCarty is a lawyer, no doubt about it, but that causes me more suspicion than.
One of the records I did not speak to, Nick, I spoke to Mark.
Mark, okay, whatever.
He's a cowboy.
Yeah, okay, but we don't even know who owns Two Dot these days.
And that's ranches now.
And that's Faisal doesn't do that. Some of the Pandora's Box wealth sheltering in Wyoming you've heard about, but that's neither here nor there. The state can't do anything about the private land versus public land. We're not. There's no point in even going there because you can name something from above and beyond. Because it's geology, it's a landmark. The interesting thing about all of this is to me is that, well, we've had Native Americans living around here for at least eleven thousand years. The Anglos got in here in about eighteen eleven, first two or three trappers, and then on through all the way up through Matajara, Civil War, people coming here after that. At the time we talked about this last month, bring it all forward, that lone promontory of Jugwater Sandstone has never been given a name by anyone. We all call it the Red Hill. That's the only thing I've ever heard. I called everybody I knew up in Sunlight Crandall, in and out of that country forever, including myself. My earliest memories are going up and down that canyon. We never called it anything but the Red Hill. Small R, small H. The natives, and I've run this by Mary Keller and some others, saying, were you able to find anything from the Crow or the Nez Perce or the paddock, Mr. Choney, or Blackfeet or anyone? Did you ever find anything that they used to denominate that Red Hill? And they came up with nothing, even though there's a lot of Indian names and a lot of landmarks here. So I don't know what to tell you on this, other than I still think, and I am not, I want to say this on record, I'm not a fan of Jackson Pollock's art. What I am a fan of is the fact that he, in the twentieth century, was a titan of the art world. And yet you would not know that, coming in on an airplane to Cody or coming in on a road trip, that that ever happened here, that he was born five, six miles north of town in a ranch. That the most, if you name the five gods of Mount Olympus of twentieth century art, Jackson Pollock is one of them. To me, that is an opportunity. And all of these people from the paleo-Indians, pre-Columbians, Plains Indians coming in here, the cavalry chasing them in here and chasing them back out again. Everything that's happened, none of them took the time to put a name to it. And so as far as I'm concerned, it's wide open. I think this is an interesting idea, but I only consider it to be one of several things around here that ought to have Jackson Pollock's brand on it. We need something at the airport for an arrival. We need something downtown. I think I know more about Jackson Pollock than anybody at this Vatican of the West, West of us, because they they didn't know a whole lot about the guy. He's not a Western artist. He's not, he's an artist unto his own. And I think that Cody, Art County, and this region should do something to honor that. Here we have it. It's in your lap.
Okay, here's my comment back to you on that. I agree that I don't, well, I had agreed earlier to recognize him being from here, I think is fine. And if it was at the airport or somewhere else in the city of Cody. But my concern is that we are potentially drawing people because of that to private land. And I don't think we have, I don't want to be in on that. If they, there was discussion at the last meeting about maybe putting a sign about there, doing this or that. I think that's disruptive to private landowners and they have a right to their privacy. If we want to acknowledge him in some way from being from here, I have no problem with that. It's doing it on, in that situation with private land and the landowner not even agreeing to it. If the landowners had a different feeling about it, might feel different, voted that way the last time. But I'm not comfortable voting against the landowner and promoting that on his land.
You know Wyoming dossier is a fence out state. You don't want deer or coyotes in your place. You put up a fence. It's a two dots problem, not the counts.
Well, if we do this.
I don't see.
And ours is just a recommendation. They may not take it, but that's my view.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting argument. I don't think it's going to fly now. There's something I would like to know. Have you been in contact with the state naming board at all? Molly ever send the paperwork down to them or are we still up in the air with it or?
No, our letter was sent in and she did call them afterward to ask a question about the private land ownership because we needed clarity on that. It was brought up that it was privately owned.
Okay, the membership of the current Board of Wyoming Naming Board, they meet virtually because there's not a lot of business going by them. They never need to go together. As near as I can tell, and I have tried to contact this guy for two days and I shouldn't allow it, I don't. Maybe one of you do. Dan White, remember Dan White, science teacher, Deborah? Husband and wife, best teachers ever. Dan is on that board. There is a Dan White on the Wyoming Board of Names. If it's not the same one, then this is, I'm wasting my breath. He would be a great choice for it if it was.
Madam Chair, I agree with you, but I've come across that Dan White on different things and it's not the same.
Yeah.
So I do agree, he was one of the best teachers.
Yeah, but I think you need to call their exec director down there and see what they might have on this. This can't be the only time it's ever happened.
No, we can, we can check into it, but we do have to.
Mr. Vanderhoff is correct. We, we're not the final say so on it. We're offering an opinion and this is our opinion. And that's, my opinion was not to name at the last night.
Yeah, I understand. I know where it's coming from. My question is, have you heard since this all came out, there's been a couple of letters to the editor, you know, old Hawkeye Minnick, he wrote a column about it, you know. And what have you guys heard since we were all here last night?
Madam Chair, other than my father, who freaked me off about it. I've, I've heard from a lot of people in passing conversation that it doesn't fit. They had no problem with a recognition of him, you know, being born here, like you said, the airport somewhere else. But as far as naming that, I had a lot of folks come up to me and say, it doesn't fit.
Yeah. So you're going to do what going forward?
I don't know. I need a motion to tell you what we're going to do going forward.
If I could, I appreciate you opening this back up and revisiting it. I didn't bring it up before because I wasn't a hundred percent sure and that's why I had the facts. And I apologize for my homework prior to. And I do know the fact is, when you have a monument on private land, it doesn't attract people, whether it is geographically recognized or if it's just on maps, the town deeds sit on my property. I'm familiar with them in Clark. And I have, at least I have a dozen or more people trespass every year. It doesn't matter if you have signs up or fences. People see it on a map and they want to climb to the top of it or go scratch their name in the sand rock, whatever it is. And if we can help avoid that, or at least protect the landowners, that's why I'm sitting here, not for some artist's activities. So with that, I move to rewrite a letter in opposition of the naming of the Red Hills, Red Hills after Jackson Pollock.
You're only looking that way, I can't.
I moved to resend our old letter and write a letter in opposition of naming Red Hills for Mr. Pollock. I'm not suggesting another name because that's not the issue. It's just whether they, we are supportive or opposed, and I'm opposing, as I was the last time around.
What are your reasons for opposing?
Because mostly because it is on private land. I have other thoughts when I stated those at the last meeting that I didn't think it was a correct fit for Art County and the Cody country.
I will say that. And the point of my career, Madam Chair, was the point of the discussion. When I was in the gas ranching outfit business, I was at Castle Rock Ranch. When I purchased a ranch at Castle Rock, it'd already been named. And your points were well taken about private property. I can't tell you how many people came in. Because there was a big sign on the highway, the Castle Rock Monument and all this kind of stuff. I tell you how many people we had on a weekly, another daily basis, come in and want to go up here. They want to climb it. They wanted to.
Madam Chair, I would have to, you talk about Pollock being maybe not your favorite. No, one of my favorites. And I think he is one of the great artists. Actually, being from Cody, I would like to see some recognition, but you know, the private property rights in naming someone else's property. But I think maybe this might get a ball going, at least in the people involved in our community. If we can find a public spot that we could rename for Jackson Pollock, or maybe there's some other rights. When I found out it was on private property, I wanted to name something on Lloyd's land. I can't go near that, so we can use that. So maybe this discussion might bring up some interest in the art community here in this area to maybe think seriously about some naming of certain points, you know. Some county property, I'm fine with, but on private property, I'm not.
So, Madam Chair, can I address Mr. Mangle and the rest of you?
Just one second.
Sorry, Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. I didn't read the letter. We just submitted our minutes. Go vote to them. Go vote to them. So my guess, that's what they want.
Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of agree with all of this. I know how I would feel if somebody dropped a name out of the sky on the hill behind our place, but having said that, oh, well, I'm done with it. I just came, I just wanted to be here to make sure that the old artist in Michigan had somebody advocating, volunteering, just stating your case for someone who can't be here. It's really sad, but I wish frankly you would get more clarity from the state board of names. I wish you would get some authentic and perhaps even in writing clarity from the Two Dot. Either they're, and I don't think their ranch manager has got enough stripes on his shoulders to say this. It has to come from Faisal. And a Faisal who, by the way, sits on the board of Buffalo Bill Center West, bought his seat and there he is. I've only met the guy a couple of times. He's a Palestinian oil man from Houston. And worth billions. And if he, I don't, I wonder if he's even aware of this and what he would have to say about it. And if you ask Faisal, if we could do him the honorific of calling that little Red Hill. And all they have to do is say, yes, I think that's a great idea. Me as a patron of the arts. Then it's up to Y dot and the Two Dot to put a couple of signs on the fence. After that, if somebody's trespassing, you call the sheriff.
One last, one last, no, you're, you're, I mean, interrupting that, Madam Chair.
I was just going to say, if he, if he is here or has done, pays attention to Cody News, as you stated, he's probably seen this in the paper, the discussions that we've had. He also has the ability to contact USGS as much as we did, because that was published in the paper, how to get ahold of them and put the information in. We could do a little bit more. I don't know how much time we should spend on chasing this.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing. The meeting at the state is on the eighteenth of May. So you've got literally a month.
Right. And I, we have a whole lot going on.
That's another twenty hours.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair, is the conversation with Mr. McCarty is he was on hold before, he didn't want to offer an opinion to me until he talked to the owners. His statement is the owners are against it. And I was not going, I told him, I said, I'm not going to represent anything coming from Two Dot until I hear there is something from Two Dot.
See if I can double check that. We still have a month.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. And the motion is to resend our original motion and to not approve or not send a recommendation for the naming of Jackson Pollock as presented.
What my motion was to write a letter in opposition.
We have to do the minutes is what they want. So if we just have in the minutes that we're rescinding our first letter and opposing the naming, then we should be fine. All those in favor of motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
You can understand.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're past my part. Come on up to the table. Thank you for your statements.
Yeah, it's all right.
Sounds like it's important to somebody.
You're going to talk about the Maran Hades.
Yeah, about the Red Hill.
No, Maran Hades.
That conversation could go on a long time.
Our next thing is, I would prefer to say about Valley Recycling.
And you know why I'm here is I know it's difficult for you this time of year because I'm maybe one of the first ones, apparently, from the dates that were offered to ask for money. I know it, I don't like doing it, but it's an organization that I started back in the late seventies. And we've always, you know, it's a hand-to-mouth type business. It's not the kind where you can, that you're not making enough profit, you charge more. This doesn't work that way. And, and so here we are again and we've been, from my board's perspective, we've been a little disappointed. We appreciate the money that we got, but we're a little disappointed having at one time getting about eight thousand down to twenty-five hundred. And this year, you would think. And this year, you would think, oh, everybody says everything's higher. Cardboard's up, aluminum's up, steel's up. But that trucking is taking away all the profits, if you can get a truck. You know, just recently now there's, they say there's going to be a few more trucks available, but I don't know, it's coming out of the west coast and there's still container ships anchored out there trying to get their stuff off. And I won't even get into politics or why. Well, I think it's a problem, but here we are, you know, with, with, like I say, we have stockpiled cardboard set in our yards and everything. We can move. Some of our stuff, our aluminum and paper products and stuff we can ship out. North Park Transport signed a agreement last year with Wyoming Solid Waste Association, of which you are members, that they will take some loads and stuff, partial loads and stuff, and deliver it to Salt Lake City or Billings or Denver, wherever they go. So that's helped a little in getting those kinds of supplies out. Plastics, uh, we've expanded our plastic picking to colors now. Uh, the industry oil prices, they're way up and when oil prices are up, then plastics looks pretty good. So they, the virgin plastics are too expensive. So there we set with that. So. And we're doing the very best we can. We are open three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from nine to four, and on Saturday from nine to two. And we don't leave the tugs out. We have a couple of people who really don't like that, but when it comes to handling materials, we separated when it comes in the door and everything. It's a lot more efficient and a lot less manpower for us to dispose of. And we, and we don't have to fill our garbage containers that we, we pay the city for to haul off. So it balances out. It's, we have to take a little heat like you people do when somebody doesn't like it, you know? It's, it's part of the game being in business. The one thing I do want to emphasize why we're asking, would appreciate a little more money from the help from the county here. This is a chart that we have on our wall. Any of those that says city, county, or, and this is the, that's the number of people that come in that particular day. And you can see that the city of Powell is basically subsidizing the county. Uh, there, and some days we have more county residents and that by county, I mean outside the city of Powell that are delivering it. So we'd like, you know, just a little more help if we could to help offset the cost of the steel, just the bale, uh, cardboard and in stuff right out of those, just the steel wraps that go around it are really expensive. You've probably read the paper that we acquired an extra, a couple of extra bailers and stuff. We got a heck of a deal on it. At Warland with recycling entirely. And the landfill was where it was at, and they didn't want anything to do with it anymore. And the city, they thought the city would take it over, but the city didn't. So we, we ended up getting a heck of a bargain there. We couldn't afford it otherwise. So we had enough in our reserves for equipment if it breaks down, that our old bailers, but we have the day to day operation there. So we were really trying to struggle to get through that. So basically, that's where we're at and we're here again. You know, we, we want to keep doing it because it's right. And in, in the long run, you know, it's not a short thing. It's just forever. Right thing. And so we want to keep going and, and, uh, with the city's help, we can keep the doors open. Uh, if it wasn't for the city's two dollars per person, like no way we could keep the doors open. We just wouldn't pan out. But we're asking that you, you know, consider when you do your budgeting this time, maybe increasing it to help us out a little more to cover what we're getting from the county. Not all the county, or there are some people that drop off the twenty five dollar check once in a while, which is equal to about what the Powell residents would pay for a year, but I can count them on two hands. So it's not a wealth of them coming in like that. I guess the other thing that I want to mention is, we are hosting Powell, as you probably knew, for thirty three years. I was the voice of Wyoming Solid Waste Association, started it along with a couple of other gentlemen who have long passed away. And we, Powell has hosted it over the years, two or three times. And this last year, Evanston was supposed to host and, but they were kind of hamming on, so I stepped up and said, let's have it in Powell. And I guess I have enough in front of my class that they are going to be hosting it in Powell the last full week in August. I will get you a brochure. And I know not everybody can make it, but it might be nice. If you look it over, you might find a couple of sessions that have to do with cardboard or steel or landfilling. We spent a lot of time on landfilling at the seminar. So some of it's highly technical and it can get really boring if you're not an engineer. But there are others, you know, things that we can talk about when we talk about growing garbage, our little stone pole we have outside of town to get it here. But, you know, baler systems and stuff like that have worked out really, really well. And there is a state, uh, like Raleigh's transports their garbage all the way to Casper. And some other communities too. So, and you all know, and I won't get into that, we go to Billings back. Anyways, I want to invite you folks there to be at the fairgrounds. I've been working with Mr. Mangle on getting things handled. Get your there with the employee thing, but I think we've worked it out. So where we get that handled, so. And if there's any other questions, why? We haven't answered them, but as you can see, this is why, you know, we'd like a little more help from them. This is a, it's all dated by the days that we do it. So we keep good track so that we can justify, we're not coming in here just asking for boost time.
Any other questions for Mr. Mangle?
Thanks for coming in, Mark. Appreciate it. I said, thanks for coming.
Yeah, well, I, I can't say that I dislike coming here. I don't mind it. I know you guys don't love it either, but it's part of what you gotta do. So I appreciate you taking some time to listen to us. If you ever do have any questions, why, uh, don't, don't hesitate to holler. I'd be happy to spend a couple of days with you.
Right, Mark?
Thank you.
Can we rename the, rename the Maran? Can we rename it the Maran Hady Recycling Plant?
Uh, let's not go there. I get a phone call then. My rep and Dave are over.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, our next order of business is, it's a lot just impressive. Let me see. Tell me what's on, like, the direct conversation. Uh, two things, utilization of the Community Charitable Relief Program Funds and their request on the fairgrounds.
Welcome. Well, thank you for having me. This is what I'm trying to say. I'm so used to saying welcome on my end, so forgive me.
Well, welcome. Well, welcome to all of us.
You know, I have enough fun on my side. So I'm Lisa Watson. If I haven't had a chance to meet you, I know I've seen many of you at events. Um, I've been at the college for over eight years now. I know some of your spouses better than others from uh, the days of my as CFO and oversaw the physical plant. I still am doing that. It's, that's part of kind of what we're talking about today. And I brought my good friend here, Miss Shelley Wessel, who would, together, we wanted to come and say some positive things about the work that the commissioners have done for us and our students, and then give you an update on the student center, if that's okay, and talk to you a little bit about what we're hoping to do as far as mutually uh, agreeable arrangements. So Shelby, you want to start?
Yeah. Yes, just more or less provides a recap for you of the funding that we received through the Community Charitable Relief, uh, funds that the commissioners distributed last year. As a significant beneficiary, beneficiary that we wanted to bring back to you and provide some feedback. So you'll see, uh, there was two different ways we could receive money. Some was from reimbursement, like previous expenses. And the other was what they call revenue loss and money to carry forward. So we had one reimbursement category that those numbers were known when we were here, the thirty four, eighty, fifty seven, and seventy six students. Since then, we have taken the other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you provided. We were able to run a second, the first year experience class for free last summer to provide more online instruction and help students prepare for, you know, the new environment that from in which they find themselves learning and spending class time these days when they're online. Um, with sixty through sixty three students took advantage of that. We also were kicking off the new VAS, that sort of applied science. Uh, that's a professional studies degree, um, under the auspices of our business department. We have eighteen students who declared themselves impacted by COVID, of the people who were involved in that. And it provided tuition and fees for that new bachelor's program on our campus. And it's been a huge, hugely positive experience for the students and for the college. Then finally, the last category for us was the career and technical funding. And again, what we wanted to do was to just note the forty seven students there. And you can see the range of programs from medical programs like surgical tech, lobotomies, um, to the electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing, and our CBL program. Our CBL program is going like crazy. Um, new regulations that went into effect on a federal level in February this year. We have companies from Salt Lake City calling, wanting to bring people in. We've got more than sixty students currently involved in different forums or, you know, levels of the program, looping through it. So it's been, it's been great. We had a lot of workforce pieces. We had a lot of academic pieces. And we really just wanted to make sure that you felt comfortable and could see the fruits of your, um, investment in Northwest College. Are there questions or thoughts from you folks at this point? Yeah, we do have, as we know from the audit standpoint, backup and form on each of these students in order to receive funding. They had to fill out the form, um, and declare themselves, you know, impacted by the, by the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we've got all of that documentation as well. And this is just the highlights and kind of the show and tell fund that we wanted to give that to you.
You know, one of the things I'll add to that, that I think is kind of neat is, obviously, it goes to the guys of, you know, people who were affected by the pandemic. But we really serve people in the community who are from sixteen to sixty five, because we've got twenty two to sixty five year olds in our VAS program. So if any, if anybody was, could fall eligible and were in any of those programs, they had an opportunity that they would not have had otherwise. Especially when you look on the backside and you look at those workforce support areas, there's no federal aid for those programs available for students. So without this support, they would not have had any scholarship opportunities to get started. And so those are obviously programs where they can get a degree or a certificate and they get a job right away. So that's a great way to get people back to work.
So, Madam Chair, thanks, thank you. This looks great. I mean, I appreciate what you're hardworking. Just, I'm probably, yes, that of the say forty seven students in the career, uh, friends, have, do you think stay local after their training?
I would say a vast majority, quite frankly, because a lot of the students that we're bringing in to the workforce are local people already. And so they're getting set up with an apprenticeship, but they're going to get the CBL program.
Their education is right here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that program in particular is almost exclusively local folks. Um, and so.
Well, I think that was the intent of the money. I'm not sure, but I would like to think that that's what the distributed it out, local way to distribute was to help local.
Right. Well, first it was for local people.
And that was the idea.
Right. But then secondly is.
When you mentioned you get people coming from Salt Lake, what was the CBL people, it got me thinking.
No, no, not like that. That's where we're currently at. Uh, that program is just getting lots and lots of play. But this was early on when, when it was really, um, in, in, I don't want to say the beginning stages of that program, but the federal mandate for the, uh, training had not gone into play at that point that are pushing the ban even higher. And so this served, this served our folks. Yep. Okay. So I've got, I, I just have a one hand app for you too, because we didn't want you to feel like you were missing out on, on hand apps today. Um, and this is just, uh, I cheated a little. I took a memo that I gave to the board, uh, last month, earlier this month, and I updated it for you. And so it's just a high level thing. You don't even have to read it right now if you don't want. But if you want to know what's going on with the student center project right now, here it is. And so it's a nice way as commissioners to see what's happening, go back, page it, the nice pictures. You can kind of see what the outside of the building would look like. Some of you may have seen that before because as the very front page discusses, we started on this in two thousand and fifteen. Um, the student center project has been a master plan item for close to fifteen years now. So this is not the first time we've started talking about the building. It's, as you know, dated. Many of you probably did the ugly tour or have been in the building, and so you know the conditions of where we're at. But the main reason that I came to visit with you today was just to talk to you a little bit about where we are in the process and how that would maybe tie into the commissioners, um, our requests of the commissioners and the spaces that we have available in the county. So one of the challenges with obviously building a student center is still getting our students as we do this process. And so when we looked at the campus and we looked at the way the students go through the grounds and they utilize the build, the whole campus itself, the best place for the student center is where the student center is. It is literally the heartbeat. It's right next to the gym. I mean, it is just where it's the lifeblood. It's the heart of the campus. So we figured that out quite a while ago, but you know, tearing down the only building that can cook and serve students is kind of a challenge. Um, we've been working literally weekly now with our architects and with our construction managers, Roadhouse Construction, which is exciting. We're using someone local and I know probably most of you know Fred, and he's just as amazing as, as you probably already know that he is. So he's been a blessing to us. Um, and, and we were really talking about what it's going to take to do this temporary dining facility. So again, we've got a longstanding building that, uh, we've been looking at on the master plan related to athletic locker rooms that were borderline Title Nine compliance issues with, and we have this need for temporary dining. So the state has said, yes, we would absolutely support that you need a temporary dining space. We don't want you to take current space out of classroom production and out of, you know, the, the old trapper room. Um, is a space that we use for classes and for wrestling and for all kinds of stuff. We looked at that as an opportunity for temp dining, but then again, you lose the opportunity to use that space. And at the end of the day, no matter where we go on campus, we have no facility to prepare the food and cook the food. So we started looking at, could we rent some modular units? We're probably three years too late on the Williston Basin to mine. So the man camps are gone. Um, and if you really want to rent a unit for fifteen thousand a month, um, that is very small. They can get you something out of Alabama or California. And it just started to become a very, a really large expense for the project itself. And remember, those are sunk costs. So once I, once I rent that modular, it's just a rental fee. Even we thought, you know, just do it ourselves. Can we buy something? Even that, its supply chain is so bad that many of them. So long story short, we started talking about what is available in the community, you know, what kind of larger kitchen preparation spaces are there? And it kind of came down to the fairgrounds or also the old South Side Elementary. And that's now the Trinity Private School, right? But that, I think it's that, just, but I'm not sure the affiliation. Anyways, um, the more, we went and looked at a couple of different spaces and the more we talked about it, the more we thought it would be really great if we had the opportunity to use the fairgrounds. The challenge with that, which I know right up front, is the timing. So we're looking at a fifteen month project set to start in January. So from a rest of the year perspective of the fair and round space, there's maybe not as many conflicts. But of course, the fair is obviously very important and near and dear to everyone's heart. And we don't want to be a problem for that as far as that goes. But once we move in, it's also kind of hard to move everything else. So we were just like, is there a way we could rent or, um, you know, get into something that's more reasonable for us as far as dining? Is there a way we could work with the F A or whoever? We don't want to take away from food truck business. I know that would make people sensitive. We don't want to try to do that. But is there a way to coexist for those two weeks in a positive way for the community? And still be able to not have to move out for two weeks and, and be able to be there the whole time. So that's really why I'm here today. I wanted, I'm visiting to see a little bit about it. And, um, we've been trying to look at lots of different options. If there's a way that we could keep our money in the community and do something like that, I would much. If there's a way that we could keep our money in the community and do something like that, I would much rather do that than give it to somebody in Alabama. You know, nothing against Alabama, but I'm giving money here, thank you. Um, and so that's, that's why I came today. We wanted to visit with you about where we were with the project and what were our thoughts were on the temp dining kitchen, so.
And, and I guess through our conversations, we're talking about just use of the kitchen and maybe a storage room or two as far as the old classrooms from my understanding, talking to the playground.
Right.
But your students will still be fed on campus. You're going to move the food over to campus.
That's correct. Yes, and thanks for bringing that up. So moving the students back and forth between the fairgrounds and campus when they have like hour breaks and stuff like that, that's really hard to do. It's much easier for us to carry food over to a temp facility. We did originally start with the idea of not realizing where we were going to be with modular kitchen prices of, you know, we're, could be cooked in that space, we do whatever. Now we got a sprinkle and there's all kinds of regulatory stuff. So we said, okay, then we'll bring it out in a modular kitchen and start with that and it's crazy. Plus just the utilities and the development of the land because it's raw land there next to the sucker build. And it just started to get really big on us. And so we're trying to put every single dollar we can into the student center building, um, into this temporary, it'll be a shell. And with, um, that building and our guys will finish building it out over the next couple of years for, for athletics. But the reality is, how do we keep them there? How do we keep our focus on their classes? How do we not take away from any academic space and, you know, just keep the project glowing?
One of the.
No, okay.
One of the conversations that I had after hearing that on this was conversations that Mr. Biebers is one of the reasons he's here. Um, is the use of that kitchen throughout the year for the community and what we have it for with the rentals. And I know it's not as used as the home itself. Um, not everybody serves food and things like that. And the other thing we looked at is, is it is a January start, so it's not anything that would affect what's probably already on the books as far as in the kitchen. So we'd have plenty of notification on whether there's a workaround or to work with. So that was part of the conversation that we had, because there's time here to get adjusted if the county would be able to do this.
You mentioned bringing equipment in, how much, no matter what kind of equipment you should bring in.
Well, so what they did was they went kind of to both spaces and just looked at the kitchens that the setups were and then what we normally do. So for instance, um, I know that there, that you guys have an ice machine that's not working, but we have ice machines that are working. So we could bring an ice machine in and make sure that we have ice. Um, we have our pizza oven decks, things like that that are easy and they're mobile so that we can bring in whatever we need. The goal is not to rearrange the kitchen or change anything crazy out. It's just, we bring in our own, um, cooking equipment and all of the small wares and everything that we would use. We're going to use disposables, uh, on campus because it's just to also have a dishwasher that can handle that kind of capacity and hauling that stuff for three semesters theoretically, that's a lot, so.
Yeah, I, I don't see, one of the issues too, we have, of course, we have the, uh, the, the entire month of December has been looked at by, uh, and I once put the Santa's house there, uh, inside that same building. Uh, as far as locking off the kitchen with the rest of the hall, is, is that possible to do?
I, I believe so. I know that Beresky, so our, we had a group that went over, so Sodexo went over and, uh, and our physical plant guys, our electrician, our plumber, um, the executive chef and the gentleman, or they went over and they walked the whole space. They talked about options. I did not go. Um, I felt like they were more than capable of doing that without me. And they came back with some positive, um, thoughts and ideas. We talked about, we've got lots of mobile freezers and kitchen, um, and refrigerators that are large. So we have capacity to store some stuff in different places. We, you know, my thought was, do we have to rent a trailer outside? I don't want to infringe on important spaces for the county if we can, if we can at all, you know, do that.
And as far as the fair, I mean, we just had the, the one concession in the, in there with, it was the taco went nowhere. We usually found Brian.
Director.
Quality control.
I don't think, you know, as far as the fair, if we can block that off, you know, next year or so that
Just plan for it.
people just know that that is, the college is open.
Well, and that was my point about, if it makes good sense, if we're there and somebody wants to do something with us, then that could be something we could do. We just don't want to take away. And we know that the fair is a sensitive topic sometimes, so we want it to be an addition, not seen as a detriment to, to the fair. That's all.
I think just, uh, if we have the actual equipment that you're bringing in as far as, you know, our insurance policies.
Oh, yes. Right, yeah, and we could definitely talk about that. We also have been talking with our insurance company. Is that everything we need to do for this project? Because it's a big project that you can imagine.
Mr. Biebers, you're available for a kind of, you know that building.
Yes, yes, I do.
Um, as far as the uses and, and like you said about with the first rental house and that kind of thing, do they usually use the kitchen?
I don't believe that Kringle House does. The only ones that I'm really aware of, and you know, we have an occasional, um, like our FFA parent support group dinner uses that kitchen. I personally don't see any reason they couldn't use the other kitchen that's in the other hall and just shuttle that short little distance for that event. If we can kind of look at it in that aspect of, as long as we're not renting the big hall and the kitchen for, you know, two different outfits that need a kitchen. I see no problem with shuttling food that's short distance across the fairgrounds for an event in that field. Uh, you know, utilizing the, uh, office meeting room area, you know, as maybe their serving area or something like that, maybe not so much on the carpet, but, um, but yeah, I, I personally don't see a reason we can't. The, the minimal amount that that kitchen is actually used, I, I think we can probably satisfy it with the other kitchen.
On the tour that they did, it's my understanding from Beresky that they also looked at one or two of the very seldom used classrooms to be able to store some of the items that they needed stored when they have lots of deliveries.
Yeah, that was my only thought is when you're really talking about the actual kitchen space, they still have catering equipment and they have service, you know, all of their pots and pans and stuff like that. So just kind of operational space a little bit.
Do those get rented? I don't think those are rented very often as far as those.
Not really. Um, I guess my thoughts are if, say, maybe the college is willing to rent a Conex container, we could get the majority of the stuff out of North Storage into it. Uh, I mean, literally the, the stuff that's in there, I shouldn't say, literally the majority of the stuff that is in there is only used for. So if someone is willing to rent a Conex container that we could store that stuff in, then they could utilize our North Storage, uh, facility and once it, it is also lockable and no access from the actual, um, event building itself.
And that seems really reasonable to me from my perspective because I've been wondering, you know, what's the best place for space and he needs one and just how to make it all work.
I guess we just, right now, I think they're going to need some answers here pretty soon, but we would need to look at conceptually insurance coverage, the agreements, and then I'm not, I don't know that this falls under the, the daily kitchen rental fee. Um, I, I don't know because we haven't had that discussion and how we would handle that being a government entity and their need for fifteen months.
I'm sure I think, I don't think we want to come and start this as a, a standard, but in the special circumstances, I, I definitely think that, uh, we could move something out. Um, I, if you don't mind, I'd like to take off, I, I have a net race up officially. We spoke on the phone.
We talked on the phone.
And I do want to thank you for volunteering, whether you knew it or not, with Dennis and, uh, the tour bus.
Yes, yes, we'll be, we'll be volunteering some of our buses and drivers.
And I do need to visit with you or Dennis, so there, there's been some supply changes.
Okay.
That's another subject.
No, I'm sure, I mean, this, this is a, as long as you don't go remodel or redoing the student center all the time next, we have. And my daughter's going to be, is ticked because she won't be able to enjoy the, the new center as a student. But, uh, I, to me, this is, this is entirely administrative. We need to get, as, uh, Terminal Field said, a few things figured out and work with Brian over there and get, get it sorted out. But it's, I see it as administrative, but senior region, we can't afford it.
One thing I'd say about your daughter is as long as she comes back home or stays here in this area, that building is going to be built to be a community space. So we have a community room in there and the goal is that everybody should feel welcome in that building. And I know the building now is dated and has some access issues and we just want to eliminate that. We want people to flow smoothly into that space if they're coming for a game or they're there for an activity. We want that to feel like it's part of the community.
She's staying here. I told her she had to get a degree before she took over the outfit business, so she.
And I kind of thought so, but. We're not often in charge of our, our children's lives, so.
No.
Any other comments for the commissioners or we'll just, I guess.
No, I, I don't, you know, we can work it out, I guess.
Okay, I guess Lisa and I could see what we can.
That would, that would be amazing, quite frankly.
But you kept your hand when you said you were talking fifteen grand a month for those things. No, I never, never throw figures out there.
Ryan, open up the door.
Well, I also know it's what, eleven rentals last year or eighteen from or something like that. So, you know, what we pay versus what you get in rent. So if you want to go, find it.
Well, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll work something and then get a, maybe a contract designed and have the county attorney office look at things.
That's you where we're at. That would be wonderful. We would love that. And, um, as we go along, if anything changes dramatically with the timing of the start, of course, I can, I'll let everybody know. Um, you know, the plan is to finish design this month and then, um, we need to get started on the temp dining building as pretty much as soon as possible in order to have it built and ready to go for January. The idea would be from a county utilization perspective, you know, we're not stepping into, we're probably stepping in with a, like crazy madness, uh, shoot January first to get them this sort of stuff, but they don't start school until the middle of January anyway, so we've got a little time to switch things up. We'll keep them in the existing building through the end of the fall.
And we did, just to clarify, we did have a discussion that they do need it during the summer for the camps and students that are on campus. So it is a whole fifteen to eighteen months.
It, it is, right. And they do quite a bit. They've done a great job with this new executive chef. He's not brand new anymore, but he is really doing a great job with catering and the community. And so anybody has had an opportunity to experience that, it's always nice to have another good quality caterer around. I know different places and different needs, there's all different kinds of caterers out there, but that, that allows them to continue their business too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, different sweatshirt. I had the match, sir. You like it?
I do. I'm going to wave the camera so everybody sees that I'm all out.
Thanks for being there.
Have one with Dave. Do I need to come back after the, the letter I dropped?
What the hell did you do over there?
No, you don't have to explain. Don't go there.
I didn't do nothing. I just didn't know if you wanted to discuss.
We'll see you tonight.
Oh, we will? Oh, good. Nothing, six o'clock it is.
Oh, okay, we have about five minutes.
Who are you doing with?
I mean, the Riddle, there's somebody.
Well.
Try to print her out. It is like.
Do you want the.
They're trying to reach out, reach out there. I don't know. We have lots and lots of people. So fifty tables and eighty.
Uh, sure.
All right.
It'll be a lot.
All right. Um, Ms. Molly, can we use my laptop here?
But it's kind of good to get our name on there, but you would be.
Can you guys, can you see if that came on?
This one's passworded.
Well, well, we'll see if it shows up there.
You knew what, you knew what, what's that meeting downstairs? You knew what, but which button to push or?
In and out.
Yeah, they can switch the cable over here.
One second and I'll be there.
For a little bit of a lead in, the next thing on our agenda is, uh, elected officials salary review. Um, every four years, the commissioners are charged with setting the salaries for the elected officials, uh, which is, in our case, in the county, also affects the first deputy. So today is just a review of where we're at and, and, uh, how it was kind enough to put together as you remember, to see where we might go. It's just informational today, but we will have to make a decision on the eighth third. So we wanted the information now and we'll work on it and make a decision on that thing.
Yeah, it's, um, hopefully, says more sort of sound.
Okay, you're a little more IT than us.
Somebody's a little bit older than mine. One of these cables is.
It would be me. No, it's still, where's that remote for that? I don't know which cable, because you guys aren't a G A anymore. Just don't make transfer. I was going to come and get just. This could come in.
Right at the bottom.
Searching.
Searching.
That one, well.
It was.
It was.
So we don't have to talk about it? I don't think we talked about here, yeah.
Tell me, call I T.
Hi.
Thanks.
Right up. Thank you.
Says it's on two dollars.
No, actually. Hello. We're on the right cable.
How we electus to take the look?
Three.
Three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to go. Um this year, instead of analyzing every other government official at CNN, we decided to work up more with inflation. We already know Park County's been low because we haven't met the average for since um from two thousand eighteen yet. We were, the average there was uh. The average there was eight, in two thousand eighteen, the average sal- salary was eighty four thousand nine hundred seventeen. We're at eighty three thousand, so we got a long ways to go to cover up for one thing. Uh with here, the uh the first chart I'm showing you is the one for gonna show you what's gonna happen if we stay at eighty three thousand. We gradually go down and down in four years, the inflation would be like making sixty six thousand. Now currently at eighty three, I'm using the eight. Eight and a half percent inflation rate for that first year, that puts us there. The other, the other rates were, uh the estimate was taken from a range of two point seven to fifteen. From um Wall Street Journal, Forbes and Kiplinger. Those amounts, so I think we're probably, we we could be even low on that, but we're using that for now. Uh what we did is take that four years, average the four years together and end up at ninety seven thousand. That's what we're basically at at asking for, for the assessor, treasurer, clerk, yeah, district clerk of courts. Sheriff was the same thing, sheriff in Park County always received two thousand more than. Than the other elected officials, not including the attorney. So he would be at sixty eight thousand, he'd be at. With inflation, that's about what he'd be making in the next four years, and he'd be up to ninety nine thousand. Uh the average right now is twenty two thousand twenty three with the rest of the counties would be a hundred and. Three thousand, the median would be a hundred and two thousand. We're looking to get him up to ninety nine. The attorney again, same thing with him, on the first chart, you'll notice that. He would, if he started out at uh, oh, this is the county attorney, sorry. Yeah, county attorney, he's at ninety nine thousand, if he remained there with the inflation, he'd be going down all the way to seventy nine thousand.
Okay, Pat, probably not that it's a huge deal, but. Take T town, T town county out of there, we don't cost a lot to live there, but is there much of a difference? Across the state with the other counties on how much it costs to live there, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I I I take T town county, you're right, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you take them out.
Okay, yeah, you can take them out, but Park County's gonna be seeing that same thing very shortly, you're gonna see it with housing. You already see.
I guess as I'm getting that is is, so you take an average, well, you and you've take, you you took the counties that are comparable to Park County on. For other reasons, but if you take the average. Based upon what they're making in the county, there probably are some counties that it costs less to live there than.
Yeah, definitely.
Than Park County.
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to add right there.
That's true, yes, it does, it's gonna, it's costing us a lot. And the housing's really bad, which brings up rent, which makes people have to move. They can't.
Or not come here. They're still here.
Hey, this kind of stuff can happen, I'm not saying we're gonna hit Jackson Hole's, but well, yeah, but. We're headed there in that direction, and we want to put a stop to it as soon as possible. So the attorney with the inflation, the way and averaging the four years would be at a hundred and fifteen, seven forty three. Now, they did raise, of course, the maximum from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty five thousand, so the legislators are seeing we're gonna have problems too. Partner, the same thing, you'd be losing money with the inflation if you stayed the same, you'd be up to forty six thousand, seven sixty five for forty thousand with the inflation. Going on now. And the county commissioners, you guys haven't done anything for. For.
Little over that point. County commissioners never do it.
Word you get that way.
So you guys have been at thirty six, one seventy four for I think the last eight years.
Yeah, at least.
No, eight years when Joe and Warren were voted, there there was already a wage increase in place, so they. That's what you've been on, that's correct.
That's candy.
Yeah, so it would go from thirty six, one seventy four to forty two, two ninety two, and if all the rest of the county state. Stayed the same, but they won't, you know, the average would be forty one thousand, zero ninety eight, so it's right there. But with the commissioners, for some reason, we're right on course with them, but you're gonna lose if you don't do anything again this year, you know. These are what the other counties, let me see if I can shrink this a little bit. Okay. So here's what the other counties' evaluation is, how many assessment schedules they send out to be in this study, had they at least sent out ten thousand. So a lot of the counties, even big ones, are like a third of the size of our county. So this is straight up how much it's going to cost the county for the elected officials.
Enter mouse off most cloudy.
Okay. I see, okay, so. The increased proposal for the attorney, we're not, this isn't just wages, increases about seven hundredths of a percent or. Sixty nine thousandths of a percent. So the increased proposal for the commissioners is two and a half hundredths of a percent against the budget and uh go up a little bit. Okay, again, the elected officials now, that's the, and the rest of them increases about six hundredths of a percent, so forth, just straight by money. I've given you that, but I'm also gonna give you how much it's gonna cost you with the benefits included in there. Okay, the increase for the four elected officials and their deputies increases about seven hundredths, they're relatively really small, according to our budgets. Right now, you know, it's. But that increase, you guys can go over there, the increase for the elected officials, attorney, sheriff, commissioners now. Increases under a half a percent against the budget. And the elected officials and one deputy, the increase is just over one tenth of a percent. Increase officials, attorney, sheriff, now, again, the increase is just over a half of a percentage. I learned what I got, that's according to all the uh retirement funds and so forth, so we're really. What I, what I was basically trying to do is get you guys some numbers, to see where we were, to see how much it's gonna affect the budget, because you guys are, I know you guys wanted to know all about that. And rightfully so, we're using available funds of twenty four million, two hundred thousand, we're gonna have a good year this year. Stuff, why we're, you know, for for valuation wise, we're gonna have a lot more, we, our valuation went up just about two hundred million. From six twenty four, we're pushing eight hundred million, which were good days when we had, we we functioned very much better with that. Um and with that, you know, I can get you more wages or start studying other peoples, see where you go, I mean. We know the other counties are going up, I mean, there's been already people that, but I don't know as much as they are. And I don't think we wait for the other counties to say, oh, they only went up this much, they went way up, go like that. I think this gives us a good reason to base a fair wage on that would get us up to where we should have been anyways. And plus account for the inflation that's happening right now, and with that, I'll just take any questions from who they have.
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. You know, and and it's something we need to do, there's no question in my mind that our county has changed. And county government is becoming much more complicated, I think, if we all go. And so it's very important we keep up with the times, I'm not sure that the figures are correct. Because I don't know how you're gonna handle a lot of future inflation for the next four years, you know, like the top list and stuff, reds and stuff. You know, they're not their last stagnation by the end of the year. You know, when the real doom, doom sayers are saying. Within two years will be, you know, unbelievable, reflecting approaching the present day, so who knows? But moving forward, we gotta do something, we need to make darn sure that our salaries are in such a position. We try to help the people who do want to run for.
Yes, Joe, uh this chairman, or madam chair, madam chair, um yeah, I agree, these are estimates. They're they're fairly good estimates, but it's still an estimate, I mean, I have no, yeah, we have no way to go, remember, it was only two years ago, remember, we never thought oil ever hit a hundred dollars there. We thought those days were over, well, they're not.
And I can't remember way back when I first ran the county committee, I think it was over fourteen people running for three seats. And one of the questions before him was, you know, if you think you should pay for being a county commissioner, and a lot of people say, oh, no way to do it, just. You know, if you have a community service on there, hey, that ain't Kate.
No, that justice, I mean, everybody, she told they only have to work two and a half days. I don't see that happening, two and a half days is much, that doesn't happen, you guys are, you guys have to do a lot. I see Gossi more than I ever saw her.
When you ever saw me.
Yeah. He's everywhere. He's a more valuable player, commissioner or whatever, who gets that?
Um we wanted this information to, as Pat said, to work on the budget. We also have the other side with the employees, which we've been working on with the committee once a month for the last six months. So we have that proposal to look at and look it out to the commissioners, this actually, the elected officials part has to be decided on. On May third, uh the rest of the employees actually is folded into the whole budget approval process as we look at each each budget and the overall accounting budget. So this is gonna be a a couple of months that we're gonna be doing a lot of numbers, but we do have to answer this one in two weeks. So we need to take a look at it, if there's other thoughts or someone has other numbers or other ideas about how to look at this and what to do with it as far as the inflation rates or. What your thoughts are, uh either get with me or or get with Pat if you wanted to run something a little bit different, I know Steve Pauline looked at a few things that may be our current payroll, so.
But I got one, one question to eat that, just want to clarify a case now, the president just gave us, you're talking about for the next four year grading, whatever those figures were, you had on that.
I I averages together, I figure we should just do ninety seven. Just do ninety seven, don't go up, don't go down.
Well, just if we decide to do it, you're the increment, we can do that, I believe.
Yes, you can.
Okay, and then in the event that something drastic happens with the economy and inflation, we could judge at that time, we're gonna. Once, once we do it in part.
It's said, it's said regardless.
Yeah, okay.
On the elected officials, our other employees are year to year.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Uh madam chair, I think too, the other thing we should probably get clarification on. Constitution or the.
We will, always.
Just stating.
Okay. There is a question, I'll just state it, because we'll do the research and figure it out, there is a question about um comments that were made to me over the weekend. There is a question about, um, comments that were made to me over the weekend about commissioners, and again, talking about commissioner salaries, and being able to vote on a raise for yourself type of thing, which has always been something talked about. So I, I asked Colleen to look at the statutes and, and verify, we have two commissioners here that were elected two years ago that will continue to be here. We have three others that are up for election, whether they'll still be here or not, who knows? Um, but the question is, does that, are we voting on the salary for all five commissioners? Or do the two that are here have to stay where they are for two years till the election happens again?
The two you're gonna find out has to stay.
Has to stay. That's what we're looking at, there.
So they're elected.
Yeah, the salary that you're elected under is, appears to be what needs to happen, but we need that point of clarification. It just came up this morning, so we'll get that clarification, I'm pretty sure that's the way it's gonna have to be, but just so we all know, move forward.
I want that.
Would you? Anyway, that's, that's the question, but we'll get that answered, move forward. Any other questions or thoughts today?
Thanks for your work on this, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Certainly.
I want to help out there as well. Well, I appreciate it, thanks for taking, taking the time. And, uh. Go for that.
Okay.
If I come up with anything else, I'd like to know, but I'm out of here.
Where are you going? Florida.
Where at?
Uh, Hollywood.
Yes.
Um, I have no other.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I will make the motion that we approve advertisements for what, that position officially.
It's going to be an office assistant three at the Park County Fairgrounds.
Office assistant three at the Park County Fairgrounds.
Second.
Third.
Third.
Remember, two for the advertising position at Fairgrounds, but.
Will become vacant.
Will become vacant after we just for office assistant three. Any further discussion? None of those in favor?
Aye.
Who's second?
It was either, either Scott or I.
I just, I just. Okay.
Move to a chair.
No, no, we didn't, did we say aye?
All those in favor?
Aye. I said aye to something.
I knew you did, but it wasn't, I don't.
I'll move to a chair.
What do you have for words? Oh, okay.
Second.
The move to second is to a chair, and all those are paper?
Aye. Thank you, Leo.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, where you go?
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Where are you headed from here?
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne.
Yeah.